Okay, I'm assuming you can, because I see some thumbs up. So, good evening everyone and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee meeting. It's Monday, August 22nd. Meeting is starting now at 6:02 PM. Can we please have roll call, please, Ms. Garcia?
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Ms. LaFave? Ms. LaFave?
Here. Present. I can't hear you, sorry.
Ms. Brunel? Primero?
Yeah.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Present.
Ms. Rivera-Cologne?
Here.
Ms. Feliciano?
Here.
Mr. Willehan?
Here.
Mr. Callamore?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Present.
And student rep Evan Kennedy?
Here.
Unfortunately, I can't hear what's going on from your end. I'm just reading your lips. So... I am going to ask if it is okay with
We're muted on our end.
The members of the body for the chair to go ahead with the meeting and figure out how I can still participate.
Can you hear us now, Mildred?
Now I can hear you.
All right, there we go.
It was unmuted for some odd reason, I don't know how that works. But I can hear you, amen! Okay, so then, going back to the original thing after roll call, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation, one people, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. So, going back, Governor Baker had signed into bill, into law, on June 16, 2021, allowing public bodies to hold remote meetings through April 22 of this year, but it has been extended again. Pursuant to Mass General laws, Chapter 38, Section 20, I am hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel. I wish I could be there present with you all today. Unfortunately, after three years of surviving this COVID, I was finally taken down on Friday. Kinda sucks, but I was gonna make sure I was not gonna miss this meeting. So, with that being said, I do want to recognize and welcome Ms. Yadile Rivera-Cologne, who is now the appointed Word Three School Committee Woman. Congratulations and welcome to the Holyoke School Committee. Do you have anything you want to say, Ms. Rivera-Cologne?
Thank you all, and I'm ready to work and excited to be here.
And we're excited to have you, and you're gonna be a wonderful asset to the Holyoke School Committee. We have a lot that's gonna be happening within this school year. We're gonna go ahead and move what would be student showcase, I'm passing it over to Receiver Superintendent Mr. Soto to present some new people and some new staff that are moving on.
Great, thank you, Ms. LaFave. I wouldn't say anyone in here is new. They've all held other roles in the district, but I wanted to make sure that we put a face to the name, because we do have some new members on our leadership team and new principals. So, you know, one of the things that you guys all know from me, I'm all about growing the people that have been in Holyoke and are doing the work in Holyoke. And everyone, everyone in this room that you're gonna hear from, we'll just let them give a quick introduction, their name and their role. They've dedicated their time to Holyoke Public Schools and really earned the right to step up into the roles that they've stepped up into. So, just gonna ask them to come up and just say your name and your role.
Good evening, I'm Rebecca Thompson, I'm the new Executive Director of Academics for the District. And I'm just really excited. I've been doing turnaround work for the last 13 of 15 years, and I can say I've seen a lot of strategic plans in that time. And I feel really great about what's being presented. You can see a lot of words on a page and a lot of good ideas, but it really feels like we have the systems and structures in place to enact that work, and it's the right work. And that will be moving things forwards for our students who really deserve it, so super excited, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good evening, everybody, I'm Jan Kena-Arebo, I'm the Associate Director of Early Literacy. I come to you with 15 years of experience in education, with eight of those years specifically being in K2 Early Literacy Turnaround. I previously served as a district-wide instructional coach, supporting Morgan and Lawrence Elementary. I do not take the task of teaching our students how to read lightly. I know we have some challenges, but we also have a really good plan in place. I'm very excited this year of helping our teachers, leaders, and students grow in their ability to read and love for reading. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Rue Ratray, I'm the Principal of Holyoke Middle School. Before that, I was the Assistant Principal at Sullivan School, before that, I was the Principal at Veritas, and before that, I worked as a school leader in Lawrence Mass and as a teacher in Boston, Massachusetts. And I actually spoke to the staff this morning, and I said I was gonna come here and I was gonna talk about them, because they're fired up, they're committed, they're ready to go, and I asked them what they wanted me to say. And they wanted me to say that they know, and this comes from Principal Mogel, has taught us a lot about this. They know where the bar is, and they're really committed that they're the ones who are responsible for getting kids to meet that bar. So, thank you.
Hi there, good evening, my name is Sarita Gravlin, I am the Principal of PEC. I've been going into my fifth year and really excited, because I love PEC, it's the best school. But I'm also have the opportunity to coach three principals in the district. So, I'll be working with Sullivan School, Holyoke Middle School, the amazing Rue, and Kate over at McMahon. Really excited for the opportunity to make sure that all of our students are receiving high-quality education and looking forward to it.
Hi, everyone, my name is Jen Albury, I'm the ESL Director for the District. I am coming into my sixth year here in Holyoke Public Schools. I've been a special education teacher for the District, an ESL teacher, and most recently, an instructional coach. I'm really excited to do a lot of work and collaboration in moving forward with our multilingual learners and all the assets that they're bringing to our community.
Hi, I'm Kate Ritchie, I'm the Intern Principal at McMahon. I am a graduate of Holyoke High School. I've been at McMahon since 1999, coming straight out of college. I was a para, classroom teacher, and administrator, and now the intern principal. So, I'm really excited to continue the work that Rebecca started, align to relay, and, you know, really move us in the right direction.
I graduated in 99.
Good evening, my name is Steve Mogel, I'm going into my fifth year as Morgan Principal. I think Sarita Gravlin forgot that I was here, because she would say that Morgan is a better school, or the best school. And I'm actually, and I'm actually going to be leading our district's anti-racist and equity work. I have a deep-seated passion and belief in how we educate and consider institutional racism and unwrap that. And there's some things we need to unpack in Holyoke. And so, I've started leading some of that work at the building levels, with principals, assistant principals, and cabinet as well. And one of the things I'm really excited about is making it sustainable work. Work that doesn't die off in a year, or that doesn't go away with one person. Becomes sustainable in how we do things, how we use a lens of equity in everything we do. From the classroom, to how we construct our budget, to how we have equitable hiring practices, which then will lead to transformational change that our children deserve.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, I wanna thank everyone for showing up. We're all excited about all the planning that went on and appreciate you guys coming down and introducing yourself to the school committee and the community at large. Mildred, I'm kicking it back to you.
Thank you Superintendent Soto. Also, wanna welcome all of them into their new roles, and with Mr. Mogel, Principal Mogel, sorry. We do have as well, school committee members that are part of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and I think this would be an awesome start for them to also work alongside with you to ensure that the school committee is as well working for inclusivity within our district. So, I know Ms. Feliciano Sims is the Chair of that Committee, and she can reach out to you. And you guys can connect together. Did any of you have any questions, comments? I don't see any hands flying up from my end. So, we're gonna go ahead and move on to Do we have any public comment, by the way, Ms. Garcia?
No public comment.
No public comment. I'm sorry. Student reports.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Evan Kennedy, I'm an incoming sophomore here on the Dean Campus in the Health Assisting Program. And today, I have just a few updates to deliver. The first one is regarding summer school. Summer school was ran in-person this year. This summer, we ran an online plat, or excuse me, we used an online platform where students worked at their own pace in order to earn credits. We had two instructors to support students and advance them once they have passed a unit assessment. Regarding the new A/B schedule, our schedule will go live on Wednesday. Students will be able to access them through their School Brains portal. Incoming ninth-grade students and transfers from Holyoke Community Charter, Veritas Prep, and other non-HPS schools will get their schedules on day one. Or if they would like to stop by school on Thursday or Friday, they can do so as well. This first, this is the first year Dean Campus is switching to an actual vocational schedule. On day one, Dean staff will be present to guide all students to their homerooms, where they will receive a hard copy of their schedule. Staffing struggles are everywhere. Dean has filled many positions, Vocational Director, Dean of Management and Operations, Dean of Students, Math, English, History, Ethnic Studies, ELS, and Special Education. There are a few openings in the Health Assisting Program, although there is a promising candidate who is fully credentialed with MSN, that's Masters of Science in Nursing, ESN, Bachelor's of Science in Nursing, I believe, and Long-Term Care Experience and Clinical Supervisory Experience. There is still a teaching position vacant in Electrical. The Electrical Teacher had taken a position at a different vocational school. There are some very talented adults joining the team this year, who will come with lots of experience. Maggie Nugent will be filling the position of the Vocational Director. She has extensive experience in the field of education. I have Yep, okay. Lori Dennis is the former Vocational Director for approximately the last three years. She held the position, and she was amazing, and everything she did is greatly appreciated. Her farewell to Dean was ordering around $500,000 worth of equipment and materials that will allow each program at, each program at Dean to deliver a higher-quality instruction. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kennedy. Do we, do we have a Holyoke High School North representative?
Not tonight.
Okay. All right, so moving on, from student reports, I know that there were some key points that Mr. Kennedy put in there, but I know we will be discussing that further into the meeting. And we can have more discussion on that. So, we'll move on to the Receiver Superintendent, Mr. Anthony Soto's presentations and his reports.
Great, thank you. Sam, I also think that we need to get Aaron in the meeting, I'm not sure. Okay, good. So, I wanted to give a quick update to, we have three items on the agenda in my report. One of them is just our return to school. As we committed last year to the school committee, we want to make sure that this upcoming year, we're always talking about where we're at with our rezoning efforts, since it's such an important effort for the upcoming, not this school year, but the following year. So, we have an update on that. And then, I also committed at our last meeting that I'll present our final strategic plan to the school committee at our first meeting, and we'll be doing that today. So, in terms of return to school, I've broken it into a few categories. One of them being a school start and end times, one, a quick update on transportation, a staffing update, a COVID update, and then we'll jump right into rezoning after that. So, the first item on the agenda is around our school start and end times. As many of you are aware, we had worked with a consultant, education research strategies, to really take a look at our, at the Entry Plan Findings Report, and see, there were many things in the Entry Plan Findings Report that spoke about the use of time and collaboration with teachers. So, we worked with a consultant and got a task force together to really look at that Entry Plan Findings Report and try to develop a schedule that got at a lot of the things that students had expressed and a lot of the things that staff have expressed. And in doing so, we've shortened the school day, the instructional day for students, by about 20 minutes. But we also know that, you know, where we're at with academics, we know it's really important to make sure that students are getting the time on learning that they need to really accelerate their learning and growth, which is why we're tightening up a little bit around our entry and dismissal procedures. We sent a memo to all of our families that laid out what the expectations are. And which basically, essentially, we're asking our families to be if school starts at 7:30, that's not when kids are walking through the door. We expect kids to be already in their classroom, you know, ready to learn around that time and doing breakfast in the classroom, and their morning meeting, and getting the day started. So, while we did shave off technically 20 minutes out of the instructional day, I think that with tightening the entry and dismissal procedures, our students aren't gonna experience a loss of learning. What we saw in our old schedule is, you know, students walking in the door when the bell rang and taking way too long to settle in. And then, we also saw on the back end of the day, you know, schools just getting ready for dismissal way too early in the day. So, we wanted to make sure that we tighten up on that. And doing so, like, the schedule that we put forward is also gonna allow for more collaboration and professional development with the staff. So, we're really excited about that. We will, this is a pilot year, we're looking at it, we wanna make sure that it works, that, you know, we wanna make sure that students experience, get a better experience with this schedule, that staff have more time to collaborate with each other, and to lesson plan, and to do a lot of the things that they're being asked to do. And we will reassess this in the upcoming school year, once the school year ends. Hopefully, it works out. So, up, can we move? Yeah, there we go. So, you can see there on the left-hand side, it talks about what our entry procedures are. If we have schools that start at 7:45 and schools that start at 8:45, and we're basically opening the doors 15 minutes before that to allow students in. We recognize the expectations around being there a little earlier. So, many of our schools, the schools that start a little, actually, the schools that start later, the schools that start at 8:30, many of them are offering before-school program. There are, there is an application process, but we wanted to make sure for our working families that have to get to work at 8 o'clock, that there's an option for them to participate in a before-school program. Any questions on our schedule?
Yeah.
Yes.
I see Mr. Callamore.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the schedule for opening of school and the breakfast program. Is that 15 minutes gonna be too short a time for children to be in the classroom and getting ready for the classes? Or are gonna have people feeding them as they come in, so that we stay caught up to that 15 minutes?
Yeah, I think that that's sufficient time for them to, they're getting it in the classroom, so they're coming in a little early. They grab, the cafeteria staff do a really good job setting up the bins so that kids can just grab their meals, sit down, and then the teacher handles the accountability piece. And they start, you know, a morning meeting and then jump right into the SEL component of the day.
Thank you.
Hi, I just have a question about the before-school program, you said there's an application process. Is there a fee associated with that?
I don't believe, no, there's not a fee associated with it.
All right, and that's just gonna be monitoring the students, it's not like a special programming per se? It's just someone's gonna be there to monitor students to make sure they're safe?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Tensley-Williams, sorry.
About the breakfast, when the kids, the ones that are coming in later or leaving, will they have already had breakfast at home, the ones that's coming in a little later?
I don't know how to answer that. Some of them will, and some of them won't.
What can we do about it if they haven't eaten at home?
The later schools will also get breakfast.
Okay, good.
So, all of our schools get breakfast in the classroom. Every, every single student has the option to go up and grab a breakfast.
Thank you, that answered that, thank you.
All right, thank you. So...
I have a question.
You didn't work for me!
I couldn't see you, I'm sorry.
I was sooner in front of you!
So, we have Ms. LaFave?
Oh my gosh, how easily forgotten I am, though, that's okay. So, really quick going on the whole before-school programming. I know personally, we have had some coworkers already coming and saying that they can't be to work on time because their kids, the start time is later, and they're not aware of this before-school program. Now, when I'm looking at what you had sent us, it says that more information will be available in August. My concern is we're a week away. How is this notified, got out to families, the working families, so that they can bring the necessary proof to the school, so that way it doesn't impact their work?
Yeah, I would say that anyone that's in that situation should reach out to their building principal. And they can get them information on that, and, you know, it's essentially what it is. It's just proof that, you know, you're working, your schedule. You know, we aren't, we aren't looking for people to just bring their kids really early to school just because we wanna make sure that these are, we wanna make sure that the program is, the program's designed for, you know, a mom or dad that may be in school, or maybe has a job that they start at 8. And we wanna make sure we remove that bear here from any family experiencing that.
Okay, and the other question is, so you said that 20 minutes has been shortened, but they have been shortened by 20 minutes, so
Instructional day, yes.
So, when something is impacted or something shortened, if something else has to be taken, right? That's kind of like how things go. So, my question is, is this in any way impacting a different area such as specials? The time for specials or lunch and recess, are we shortening from there to make sure that we still have enough of the instructional time?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, so like, I don't believe, we don't believe that this is gonna have an impact on any change in services from kids, because we've really tightened on the entry and dismissal procedures. And I say that because, you know, it was taking a long time, kids were walking through the door when the bell rang, right? And it was taking a long time to get them settled in and ready to learn. What essentially we're saying is that that happens before the bell rings. So, while technically, we've shortened the instructional day, I think that the move to really be intentional around how we're, we enter the buildings and how we're dismissing is actually getting back, you know, getting back a lot of time that students will have for, you know, the right amount of time for ELA, for math, for specials, and SEL, which, you know, that's the, the SEL piece was the piece that wasn't really, you know, clear in terms of expectations, but students are gonna be receiving, you know, SEL, I believe it's 20 minutes a day. And then, one day a week, it's gonna be a half-hour day. And that's primarily in the morning. So, to answer your question, I don't believe that any, anything is really gonna suffer from this, because we're asking our kids to get to school a little earlier and get a lot of the things out of the way that was happening during the instructional day. We're also being, you know, not sending kids home, sending students home earlier than the bell rings. I mean, I'll be honest, I've gotten a couple of calls that, from a parent at 3:20, that, you know, took a picture of a bus in front of her house, and the school dismissed till 3:30. So, you know, we're making sure that we're real clear on that part of, you know, the entry and dismissal, so that we get all the instruction and that we don't lose anything important as part of the instructional day.
Thank you.
Hold on, Erin had her hand up electronically, and then Yadite. Got it.
Thanks, Josh. Just curious, I know that's not on any of this, but what are we offering for lunchtimes this year? How long is lunch gonna be?
Um, I believe it's gonna be uh, I'm gonna have to get back to you on that, or I'm just gonna ask Mone if he can look that up for me. Shoot me a text, and I'll get you an answer before the end of the meeting.
Okay, and then, to follow up with that, are kids gonna have autonomy to sit wherever they want? Or are they gonna be assigned seats at lunchtime again?
Um, I would, we don't have, as far as the district, like, us giving directions to every principal that kids have to be co-horted and seated, and that's not something that we have done at the district level. But I don't, the best way to answer that is to reach out to your principal to make sure that they're not doing anything, you know, on their own as part of their lunch procedures. But we, as a district, and, you know, the CDC guidance and DSS guidance, doesn't say anything about cohorting and seat assignments. We, I don't believe we're doing that anymore, but, you know, the easiest way as a parent, if you're, if that's something that you have a question on, your building principal would know that, for sure.
Thanks.
Got it.
So, you mentioned tightening up the procedures. How is that gonna be different from whatever has happened before that made the students be late and start, you know, later than we wish to? And also, when will you assess that the strategy is working? Are there plans to, okay, these are actually working for these schools, maybe not for these? Like, what are you thinking in terms of reassessing and maybe adjusting?
Yeah, that's a good question. I mean, you know, we're obviously gonna look at student data, we're going to talk to staff regularly. We're gonna, you know, feel, like, get a feel from how the staff feel about this change. And, you know, we're likely going to, you know, like we do every year, you know, we released a panorama survey just to get a pulse on like what kids and families are feeling. But it's really, I would hope that by January or February, we'll know, like, okay, this is by January or February, we'll know, like, okay, this is, this is something that was a good move. Um, and we'll keep it or it's something that we need to reconsider and start looking at, uh, for the next school year. I'd love to be, you know, if we were to make some sort of change, we would wanna make sure that we've announced that to staff before the end of the school year. We don't want to, you know, make decisions like that over the summer. Um, you know, uh, and staff not know what to expect the, the following year, so. And then in terms of, um, how is it different from what was happening? Um, it really was just, you could go to one school and they were doing one thing. Go to another school, they were doing another thing. And we were real, we actually had a principal retreat, um, at the end of the school year, a couple of days after. And that's, that's all the principals were workshopping was developing their schedule, getting clarity around what the expectations for entry and dismissal are. How we were gonna communicate this to families? How is this gonna be communicated to staff? And, and principals spent almost half a day just working on those plans and making sure they addressed those, um, the questions that staff had, making sure that it was messaged to the families in the right way. Um, and it's just, you know, holding, making sure everybody, everybody, there's clarity around what the expectations are and working, working through any challenges that come up. Um, you know, with, with buses, we do have an hour in be- in between start times that, that is better than what we had before. I think we had fifty minutes before. Um, and that, that, that posed a challenge for the second tier buses. I will say, I'm not gonna sit here and say we're not gonna have any late buses because we all know that the first couple of weeks, we deal with that a lot, you know, we, I, we get a lot of phone calls from families. The, the drivers are just getting to know their routes as much of, as they practice. Um, and, uh, but we, you know, we, we hope that with that hour in between that, that, that gets kids on time. And we're not gonna penalize anyone if, you know, if their bus is late, we're not, that's not gonna be something that we, you know, penalize. We're gonna work with the bus company to try to fix that.
Angie Williams?
Mr. Soto, um, there will be a lot of students on buses. Will we have bus monitors on any of the buses?
We have bus monitors on all of our mini buses. Um, they are required as part of the, um, better services, m- mostly required as part of the services and, and student IEPs, uh, but we don't have them on big buses.
Olean.
Thank you. Real quick, um, how come some of the schools were picked, um, at seven thirty start and some at the eight thirty start?
Uh, the only change, so like, I would say the, the, the one change that we, we made was McMahon was a later start school and we moved them to the, um, earlier tier. And that was, you know, we had changed that two years ago. They were an early start school. They moved to a late start school pre-pandemic. Um, the, the Ms. Rebecca Thompson, who was our Executive Director of Academics, she was the principal at McMahon. And when we made that change, there was a lot of staff that were not happy with, with the later start. So, um, based on serving her staff and what her staff were feeling, she had requested that we look into the possibility of moving them back to the first tier. We, we did an analysis on whether or not we could do that without increasing bus costs. And we were able to do that. So, um, honestly, a large part of it was what the school schedule was already. Plus, if we made a change, what the impact to the transportation would be. We wanted to make sure, you know, that we, we consider that, we know, you know, as many of you know, transportation is not part of the net school spending, so, um, y- you know, the city in, in addition to what they provide to meet net school spending, they pay for transportation as well. So we wanna be fiscally responsible and make sure that we're, we're doing the best to manage those costs.
Middle.
So I'm kinda coming back to Ms. Tennessee's, um, question. Um, so I think what she wanted to say was, um, if my kid is co- is on that late bus, right, he already missed homeroom, um, will, will breakfast be provided for them?
Yes, nobody's gonna miss a breakfast.
Awesome.
They just need to be, like, if I were you, talk to your kid. Empower, hey, you gotta tell, uh, tell the teacher you want, you know, you want breakfast and they'll make sure that they get it. And also stu- students that, you know, grab a breakfast oftentimes, you know, we have a shared, not oftentimes, we have a shared table in every classroom. So if a kid doesn't want, you know, their granola bar or whatever it is, they bring it up there and, and anybody that's in the classroom can get it, but no student is gonna be di- denied a meal because they showed up late.
No, my second question is, um, the, um, early school programs, um, are, is the school board, or I mean, is the school department advertising that? Or are individual schools responsible for advertising their own school programs?
We advertise it through a message that, a, a back to school message. It was one way that, yeah, that, that gets, that goes to every single, uh, parent and address that we, um, that we have registered. So in there, it says like, you know, to reach out to your principal if you have any questions about it.
But if you don't have the invoice or email or whatever, you're kinda clueless to it? Unless you're tuning in.
I would hope that if there's, no, I would hope that if that's a barrier from you getting your kid to school on time, that you're talking to the school anyway.
Well, yeah, I, I just wanted to, um, I don't know how to say this. I just wanted to make sure people are well informed about the options they have, you know what I mean? Especially if it's something new, something that could be very beneficial to more than one family. I'm pretty sure people be psyched about it and, you know?
Yeah.
I see Linville has her hand up. Do any other school committee members have any other questions? I, we don't have to vote out of order to have someone out. I'm assuming we can let Erin Linville take the floor with her question, right?
I, I was just gonna answer your quest, three questions that you had. That's what, I'm not, so, um, if that's useful, I will answer some of your questions.
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, one is, I just, about the important point about families knowing about that before school, um, care at the late start schools. We sent it out at the end of June, but we're also sending it out in a family letter um, on Thursday or Friday this weekend and we can publicize it on social media too. So those are two avenues that families will be hearing about this week in addition to the school efforts. And then in terms of the schedule for how much time children are getting for lunch in elementary school, uh, we are recommending schools to the best of their ability, ability to do a twenty minute lunch plus twenty-five minutes for recess or, or bring breaks. Um, and then in the middle school level, we're recommending to the best of their ability, um, twenty-three minutes for lunch, including three minutes of passing on either, either side. So that's comparable to twenty-nine minutes in an elementary school schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Go ahead, Mildred.
I think, uh, can I move on to the next section, Mildred? Or is, are, are there more questions?
No, no. Let's move on to the next one with the transfer.
Okay, uh, the next update is just around transportation, so, um, we hope to have, uh, routes posted this week for sure, um, if they're not already posted. Um, and you can see, uh, a- anyone can visit our website. Uh, we usually post, uh, the bus stop information on our web- website for big buses. Um, and then families that, uh, that have students with, uh, uh, that are riding mini buses. Um, they, they usually get a message from, from the transportation office or from their school. Uh, uh, we, we send the, we, they don't get it from the transportation office, sorry. We, we send the information to each of the schools so that they could start working on, you know, making sure that students are gonna be getting on the right bus when they go home. And, uh, many of them call, uh, uh, to the, the special, uh, students with, with, um, students on mini buses, call the families and let them know approximately what, what, uh, times they're, they're and, and what times the bu- to expect the bus. But I will say that, um, we, you know, the first week, couple of weeks of school is, is always, always, always gonna be a challenge. Um, bus drivers are just getting used to their routes. Um, they're, we're making tweaks. There's, uh, riders that may not be, uh, riding as much as we try to, uh, to, to get it right. We did, what, we, uh, did a survey this year, which we hadn't done in the past. Uh, just to try to eliminate a lot of that, but I know that we're not gonna get all of it, right? So, um, and when I say that, I mean, there's, there's many people that have transportation and, and in our routing system, they're eligible for transportation, but they don't ride. And we d- we tried to survey all of our families to let us know so that, you know, it, it actually affects the, the routing that we do now that we're doing it internally. Um, and we also wanna advertise that we have a family-friendly email, um, for, for quick questions. And it's, uh, transportation@hps.holioke.ma.us. So, um, anyone with transportation questions out there, uh, feel free to email that and we have staff uh, monitoring that, that email account. Our next update is around staffing, um, and this has been a pretty significant uh, challenge this year. Normally we are fully, you know, ninety-nine percent, one hundred percent staff. And we're right now, as of, uh, last Friday, we are at about seventy-eight percent. Now, I wanna, you know, I wanna, that, that information itself, it could be a little misleading. Um, and the reason I say that, because we have approximately fifty more teachers than we did at the start of the school year last year. And we have about fifteen more paraprofessionals than we did at the start of the last school year. But as you all know, with this strategic plan, with Esser money, with Student Opportunity Act, the plan has always been to make sure that our students are getting just what other districts that are rich in resources are getting. To make sure that our schools have academic intervention teachers, to make sure that we have proper coaching for our teachers, knowing that, you know, many of our teachers are new and, and, and could use good coaching. So we have grown. We have, if, if you ask Ms. Gage, she, she'd probably say we're growing a little too fast. But, um, so, so while this, this, uh, staffing looks a little grim, um, it doesn't really paint the full picture. What it does say is that we have a, we do have a great plan, which, you know, we'll, we'll talk about a little later. Um, and unfortunately, uh, we're not a hundred percent staff to be able to support that plan. You know, we're asking, i- i- while we have a lot of, wh- while we've implemented academic intervention teachers and coaches, some off, if, if we don't have kids in a, you know, a teacher in front of students, they may have to take on a different role until we're able to fill those positions. Um, you know, the, many of the schools are in really good shape. I talked to the principals, they're all developing contingency plans. So when they develop their spending plans, they took the amount of resources, uh, that they had available to them and, um, and, uh, and developed a plan around, uh, around our new strategic plan. And, and after realizing that we weren't really gonna get to a hundred percent, they've come up with contingency plans to make sure that, um, we, we, we can serve our students' needs, uh, to the best of our ability.
I have questions.
I, I have questions as well.
Go to the end of your staffing or let me know how you wanna do that?
Go for it.
Okay, so I'm just gonna go really quickly just back to the transportation. It's not just a question, it's gonna be an FYI because maybe I'm the one that can't find it. But when I click on the link for transportation, if we're gonna be saying that the link for the twenty-two, twenty-three bus route is available through that link, there is no link. The only one that's there currently is the summer twenty-twenty-two bus route. So I'm not sure if it just hasn't been updated yet.
Right, we're, I said we would get it up. If it's not already up right now, we would get it up. Um, Erin, I'm not sure if you've had a chance to check in with Rebecca on, on the big bus routes?
Yeah, I thought it was supposed to be up today, so let me just, um, check and get back to you all.
Okay.
Sounds great. And then just again, around the staffing, you know, it's not something that's just, um, for Holyoke and that Holyoke is the only district facing it. Uh, districts across the Commonwealth are, are facing this and across the nation. But as always, my biggest concerns is special education, especially since that's one of the subgroups, um, along with ELL where we struggle for them to even meet, um, and, and meet their educational, uh, achievement. So what more can we be doing, uh, to get the right people and, and the appropriate staff uh, for our most vulnerable population?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I'll be honest, Mildred, I don't know that there's more that we could be doing. We have pulled out all the stops, so we've added over ten percent um, compensation to our, our teaching model. So, you know, some teachers are getting, you know, six, seven thousand dollar raises in this new comp model. Um, in, in addition to, uh, you know, when you factor in them, their step increase plus what we've done to the model. Um, we are offering like signing bonuses in some cases. Um, we're offering critical needs stipends, which special ed is, is a part of that. Um, we're doing everything we can, uh, to, to make sure we fill the, these positions. And you're right, the, the, the one thing that's most concerning on here is probably the, uh, special ed, so, um, but I will say we've, we've added a lot of special ed positions during this, this last budget season. Um, as we, we talked about that initiative for inclusion and setting up, you know, grade level teams so that there's a special ed teacher and an ELL teacher and regular ed teachers all collaborating together and that they're not doing work in silos. So many of our principals, when they develop their sta- their, their plans, they, they said, you know, it would be nice to have like one special ed teacher and one ELL teacher at every grade and just have them be a part of that team. So what, what the, some of the contingency plans that, uh, that have been developed are like, you know, now unfortunately, instead of, you know, this special ed teacher being assigned to just the third grade, now they'll be assigned to third and fourth grade and work with both of those teams. Um, we're also, you know, this, I, I would say we, we just met, uh, we had a cabinet meeting and discussed staffing a little earlier today and that was the next, the most critical step to, to addressing these staffing concerns is, uh, we're, uh, Beth, Beth Gage, our, our Chief of Human Resources and Mary Ann Courier, our, uh, Chief of Pupil Services, to, to work together to le- take a look at every single special ed vacancy that we have and de- determine which ones are actually critical for meeting, meeting student IEP or to student service needs and which ones aren't. Um, and to just, like, uh, get, just like the principals are, just to see what, you know, how could we be creative in making sure we're meeting the needs of students? Uh, one of the biggest concerns that we have this year is, is similar to the issue that we had last year uh, around, um, speech and language therapy. We normally have twelve speech, or we have twelve speech, language, uh, pathologist positions and only six of them are filled. So, um, we have six vacant positions unless we've hired somebody in the last, you know, five days, um. So, uh, we're.
I'm sure, yeah.
We did one, yeah, so we have, we're up to seven. Uh, but, but, you know, we're sitting down with, uh, Beth and Mary Ann are sitting down and, and making sure that, you know, to the best of our ability, we can, we can look at caseload and we can look at what our staff could, could do and try, try the best we can to make sure we're delivering the services, uh, around speech that, that are required by a student's IEP and, um.
So one of my, okay, so as I said, that's very concerning. So I'm, I would like to know. When we're talking about, um, the psychologists that are doing the evaluations, um, how are we in the evaluations process, reevaluations, um? Can we then look at, um, hiring through agencies? So if we're reaching out to agencies that have, um, physical therapy, occupational therapy, speech, language pathologists, um, so that we make sure that we are. um, so that we make sure that we are meeting the I E P requirement? Or are we just hoping that we hire people, um, versus, you know, having to outsource? It is what it is.
I asked Mary Ann to come up, but I, I will say that we, you know, we've tapped all of our vendors for that too. You know, we use, who, who is it, Mary Ann Futures? Why don't you answer, sorry?
Absolutely. Um, so great question, Mildred, and we do. So we have a number of vendors that we currently work with. Um, we've explored opportunities with a number of other vendors. So we currently use, um, Stepping Stones, uh, which was firmly known as Futures. Um, they provide staffing for us, uh, bilingual speech therapy assistants. Um, they were, they really came through for us this summer and were able to, um, give us time with two bilingual school psychologists who will also be working with us this school year. Um, we have a few other contracts with some other vendors, um, for, um, speech services, uh, psychologist services. Um, and we are continuing to search for, um, more candidates through those vendors. So we do that routinely. Michelle Cooper, who is our director of itinerant services, um, she is reaching out to all of our vendors at least two to three times a week to see if they have any candidates for us. Um, as far as school psychologists, we did hire an additional school psychologist, um, at the very end of last school year who is starting with us this year. Um, so we currently have one vacancy, but we do have one full-time school psychologist through one of our vendors. And again, two part-time, um, folks through Stepping Stones, and again, they are bilingual school psychologists. So, um, while we are not fully staffed, we're in a much better position, um, for our school psychology services this school year.
Can I just, um, following up on that, um, I'm, I would think that, um, the special ed staff are still doing like this, um, at academic assessments to reduce our costs? Or are we actually outsourcing those as well for reevaluations or initial evaluations?
The academic achievement testing? Um, for reevaluations, those are typically done by our special education staff in district. Um, for initial evaluations, those are typically done as the comprehensive evaluation done by the school psychologist. So if we're contracting out for it with a vendor, they're doing the whole comprehensive evaluation. So they're doing the academic achievement along with the cognitive.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I know that Wil- Wilson and Williams have questions, and I also see Linville's hand up. Linville, you don't have a question, I'm assuming you want to respond to a, something that somebody said before we move on to another school committee member?
Yes, the transportation routes will be out on the website tomorrow and we'll communicate it via email and post it on the website and text for families who receive transportation services. And we can, and we also post the routes like physically and fifty-seven, stuff like the old school, I'm looking the window. Thanks.
Thank you, Erin.
So I, I I understand staffing is just tremendously just challenging overall. But my concern comes to the fact that no matter what, I would think that at some times paras are going to have to be pulled to staff for teachers who are out. So my first question is, how are we going to communicate to our families when those parent, when those services are not being delivered? Because that's what it turns out to be. Because if they're being taken out of the classroom, you know, then they're, or they're having to substitute, they're not getting the services, and there's no way that's going to be made up in the schedule as far as I could possibly see, having lived that experience, because your time is already booked so tightly that there's no way to make up service time. Um, so that's my first question, and I have two more after that.
Let me start with the paraprofessional. So the guidance that we've given to all of our schools is that, um, any one-to-one paraprofessionals should not be pulled for service unless their child, the child that they're servicing is absent, then, then that's different. Um, there may be a time where a programmatic paraprofessional is pulled, maybe a classroom paraprofessional is pulled to substitute. Um, but our expectation is that it is absolute last, right, last ditch effort if to, to pull a one-to-one para. So that's, um, that should not be happening. If it is, then we would want families to reach out to us. Um, schools should be communicating that with families. Um, it's a little bit different if other services are being missed. So I do want to just ta- talk about that since, since you brought that question up. So, um, if we're finding that due to any shortage of, um, say, an itinerant service provider, a therapist, a speech therapist, if we, if we are not able to fulfill I E Ps, then we would be communicating, assisting the schools in communicating with families to say that there would be a disruption in service. Um, and then we would need to have conversation with those families around a plan for compensatory services. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's a little different than, than what you asked, but I wanted to make sure that our families knew that.
That's, that's gonna be my follow-up, is that it is a disruption in service. And so the question then is, how is that could be made up from the standpoint if a student is not getting their services? And we all know that the continuity of services are essential for student growth, just like being in school is essential in growth, then we are disrupting them, so it's, it's, so I, I guess, I, I feel that it's like, it's definitely in a bind situation. But on the other hand, you know, these are the students who need that continuity in order to make the progress. And I'm not just talking about a one-to-one para. I'm talking about, you know, the classroom para who's there for a purpose or a para who's watching, you know, two or three kids in the classroom. They're there for a purpose, there are reasons they're on the service delivery grid. And so I want to make sure that we're thoughtful about that. And we're also communicating to those families when we're pulling paras. And it shouldn't be a surprise, your child hasn't had a paraprofessional in their class, you know, five times this past month. You know, I just want to make sure that that is happening because I know it, it has not.
Yeah, thank you, Ellie. Um, I will say that I mentioned earlier in the presentation that we have fifteen more paraprofessionals entering the school year than we did last year. I'll also mention that a lot of principals, um, chose to purchase instructional paras with their additional funding, um, to help support. And, you know, one of the things that we can and will be messaging is, is, um, you know, if there is a need, you know, to, to provide coverage or anything like that, that we're, you know, we're tapping our instructional paras to do that before we're like pulling, you know, services away from, from students that, that require it. So we'll monitor that throughout the year. Um, you know, like I said, one of the biggest next steps that we need to do is really sit down and say, of these vacancies, which ones are like core to meeting students' I E P needs? Um, so that we can get a real true picture of, of like, you know, is this something that's gonna prevent us from providing services? Or is this something that's just gonna, um, hinder our ability to, to implement this inclusion model that we want to, you know, we want to get a, we want to build a community, a school community that every single teacher, like special ed, E L L, everybody's delivering tier-one instru-, like, it's all of our responsibility to deliver that tier-one instruction. It's not your kid or my kid, we're all in this together, so, um, you know, that's, that's, that's a culture that we want to move towards. Um, and a lot of these additional positions that we're, you know, that we've created were to help us get there a little quicker. Um, unfortunately, you know, with the job market the way it is, um, you know, we're, we're gonna do the best we can.
I just have one more question, subs. Um, are, do buildings, I mean, it's probably based on the building and the principal, their plan, do they have building subs? And, you know, how are we looking with our subs pool in order to help supplement or cover these, you know, vacancies? Because again, I'm sure there's, there's a struggle there as well.
Beth, do you want to answer that question? Do you want to come up to the mic?
Building subs are looking pretty good across the district right now. Um, because we offer benefits with that role, because it's guaranteed number of days, we're able to do that. Uh, we're, we're pretty strong in that area. I will say in addition, I think to Anthony's point, that we have added these paraprofessionals to add provided supports in case we need that coverage. And it is intended to be a rotating cycle too, so it's not the same students impacted when we are at that last resort. When it comes to our day-to-day subs, uh, it does look grim. It, I mean, last year we had about four and we're trending along those same lines again. Um, and again, it's just, there is a teacher shortage and, uh, the employment market in general is not very strong. So, uh, it is an area that we've struggled in. We have been working with, uh, building principals, if they do find a candidate on what positions we might be able to get them into, which would then provide added support in those moments where there is not enough coverage, uh, to be provided by the building sub. So that's where we stand on that. Um, yeah, you're welcome.
Ms. Williams?
Uh, Mr. Soto, I hope I'm not jumping the gun with this question. Um, when the, the students that are walking, um, how will we know that they have safe walking routes? And, um, would anybody, say an adult, be walking to make sure that they're safe?
Other tough question to answer. Um, some students walk with adults and some don't, but we do, we have worked with the police department to, uh, and city officials over the years to establish where our, like, concerned, uh, traffic areas are and, um, work with, with, we work with the Holyoke Police Department to make sure that we have crossing guards, um, staffed in those, in those areas that, that, that are of concern, you know, where there, where there might not be, you know, heavy traffic lighting, I could, you know, uh, we all know what the, most of those heavy, uh, densely populated areas are where we have a lot of kids crossing the streets that may be dangerous. We have a crossing guard at each of those posts.
Okay, sometimes, you know, they'll run across the street or, you know, so we got to make sure that they're safe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I was just gonna quickly picking backing off that. I know Kelly School, at one point, they had a program where, uh, teachers would go out early in the morning and go pick up students at different points and travel. I'm not sure if that's something the district does, it might have been through a grant, I think. Do you still have the walking school buses? So I think, you know, so I'm not sure if every school does, but I know that, um, some of the schools do have walking school buses and that, uh, people go out to the community to help, um, gather the students and walk and have a great, you know, morning, you know, adventure with the kids.
They do do them. I did one at Lawrence not too long ago, before the school ended, school year ended. Great. You have more to report on, Mr. Soto?
Not for staffing. Um, the last bullet point around, uh, around back to school is just, uh, COVID guidance. The, the state and D E C and D, uh, have, we've been working with, uh, D, the D P H and reviewing the guidance. Um, so we just wanted to make sure we are transparent with what to expect this upcoming year. What it boils down to is we're gonna be focusing on, uh, students that are symptomatic. So, um, when a student is, is showing symptoms, we're gonna, uh, we're gonna provide rapid tests and, and follow the same protocols that D E C has, has provided. Um, we're not gonna be doing, uh, screen, uh, pool testing anymore. Uh, as many of you know, uh, state spent a lot of resources on that. And, and the the amount of people that tested positive relative to the amount of testing that we did was just not enough to justify or, or to, to see that it was actually impacting. Uh, so the, 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 basically the strong guidance that, that has been given is that we need to work, monitor, monitor student symptoms and work with those. Um, so we'll make sure that we have enough, enough rapid tests in all of our schools. Uh, we will be having to place another, another order, but we have, we'd certainly have enough to, um, to start the school year for sure. Um, you know, the, the same guidance that, that D E C and C D C, uh, provided towards the end of the school year is still in place. So when a student, um, when a student does test positive, they, they would have to isolate for five days. And they could return as long as, uh, as long as they are, uh, they, they're not, if, as long as their symptoms are getting better and they don't have a fever, uh, with, without fever-reducing medication. So, um, when they do return, we, we're asking, you know, we're making sure that they're wearing a high-quality mask for the, for, for an additional five days until that, they reach that ten-day period. But this is an effort to, to try to keep kids and staff in school as much as possible. We know, now, um, we know that we looked at, uh, attendance over the last school year and it's, you know, we're nowhere near where we need to be. And, uh, especially in chronic absenteeism, we're, we're probably, uh, when, when you look at data that was released in March, we're, we're probably the worst in the state amongst public schools when it comes to chronic absenteeism, which means students that are missing eighteen or more days throughout the school year. Um, and I got to be honest, COVID has a lot to do with that. So, um, we want to make sure that, that we're not unnecessarily quarantining, uh, schools. But we are gonna be looking at, you know, if there's a trend, if there's a, a cluster and we have to shut down a classroom, we will not hesitate to do that as long. Only one thing more important than, than teaching our kids, and, and that's the safety of our students and our staff. And, and we're gonna make sure that we do everything we can to keep them safe.
We have a, the question from our student rep.
Um, so I remember last year, I don't know if this was a part of the pool testing, but parents could sign their students up to get rapid tests, like I believe it was like two a month. Is that still happening or is that part of the pool testing?
If you're, so we'll still have to get parent permission to do the rapid tests, but that'll only happen if you're experiencing symptoms. We're not gonna randomly test. Um, if, if, if a student goes to the nurse and they're sick, um, and they're showing signs or symptoms of, of COVID, we'll be able to rapid test them upon, but we have to get approval from the family to be able to do that.
Yeah, I'm, um, but I mean, like, when, like, right before we left for holidays, they would give us two boxes of rapid tests. Um, or if, like, a few times throughout the year, they would give us two boxes of rapid tests, not just like, not like you're going to the nurse and like, oh, can I get tested without symptoms? But just to keep you safe throughout the year, I guess.
I hear you. Um, right now, we're gonna just focus on students that are showing symptoms. Um, if, you know, we're gonna monitor and, and see how the school year is, is going. If we're expecting like a spike in cases, like we did during the, the winter break, and we're in a position to be able to work with the Department of Public Health and, you know, because that's what we did, the state, the state and the Department of Public Health were able to get, um, a, a bunch of tests and we, we, we were grateful that they were able to get it to us. Um, if, if we're in a position to do that again, we will. But for now, that, that's not, not, that's not something that is, is part of our procedures.
Other questions from committee members? Soto, any more on your report?
I'll kick it over to Erin for the rezoning update.
Uh, one moment, please. Um, with all due respect, uh, we don't have it on the agenda.
I, it's under Soto's, uh, report.
I have returned to school, start transportation and staffing. That's all I see here, unless I got something different.
Yeah, on the agenda is just, uh, it's, on, on the agenda, it's part of our, our, actually, I see it on the.
Yeah, it's under four C. The second bullet, zoning update, it's on the agenda.
How come I don't even see that?
I don't have it on mine.
Yeah, I'm not sure where you guys have that.
Hold on, give us a sec. So Communications and Report Four, other C Superintendent Receiver Reports. There's Return to School. And then there's Rezoning Update. None of you have that, huh?
We don't have Rezoning Update in ours.
Oh, not in hard copies.
So I guess I have a clarifying question, Mildred. Like Superintendent Receiver Reports is on the agenda and that's, like, can it just be a part of that?
The thing is, is that if we're gonna be, um, speaking on this or giving an update and someone from the public wanted to, um, do a public comment, they would have known that that would have been on the agenda, because one of the things for public comment is what they want to speak on has to be on the agenda. So we're receiving the rezoning update, I get it, it's just an F Y I update. Um, but I, so I, I mean, for us, it, it wasn't on our hard copy.
Right, I was just about to say, it wasn't on the hard copy. It's on the electronic.
Huh?
It's on the electronic.
Right, and so both should have matched.
It should be on the posting.
Was a changed one afterwards?
As long as, and it's a good, very good, we should always have agenda items listed on, so Mildred is absolutely correct. If it's on the posting of the notice that went up on the website as well as whatever bulletin, it's there. So we should be good, Mildred.
Yep.
Mr. Welland did have, you're good? Okay. Go ahead, Mildred, sorry.
That's what I'm looking for. I wanna make sure, but you know, again, I don't want committee members to be taken off guard. I know Mr. Colmore does not have access through the, for, for computer access. So he's gonna depend mainly on the hard copy. And again, we like to make sure that we're, we're prepared for the meetings versus just coming to learn of everything when we come. But if it's been posted on the city website, the public knew about it and they were able to comment and provide public comments, so be it. It was, none was received, so go ahead with your.
100%. Thank you, Mildred.
Thank you, Mildred. I'm wondering, in the packet where, in the packet where you're reading about it, did people have in the hard copy an update on rezoning? I'm just wondering.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, I'll do my best with the slides that I have and then please feel free to interrupt with questions. My name's Erin Linville. I'm Chief of Strategy for the District. It's my eighth year and I've been working on rezoning for five or more years and I appreciate being here with you today. It's a really big effort, as you know, over the next year, especially this fall. So Anthony and I are eager to meet regularly with you to talk about it. Once again, just wanted to remind folks that this school committee unanimously, unanimously supported Superintendent Soto's recommendation to move to distinct elementary and middle schools by fall 2023 and supported the recommendation that middle school is grade six to eight that was voted in January and we appreciated that support. And so this is our efforts to, this is an update on the efforts to implement that recommendation. So on slide 12, it just shows the overview about we're moving to separate elementary and middle schools. This has been years worth of planning and that this plan will help us better prepare students academically and socially, ensure continuity for programming in dual language and special education, be more equitable in how resources and opportunities are shared across schools and then also dedicate more resources to instruction and operations. On the next slide, just to remind folks quickly, it shows three columns, you know, where we were at last year on fall 2023. The middle column is where we expect to be next year and the last column is where we expect to be in fall 2026. This process is complicated by the fact that we're trying to build a new middle school and that we are working closely with the MSBA and City Council to get that funding, but we don't know for sure if we will be able to. So we wanted to, even though the decision was made to move forward with rezoning in fall 2023, we need to make sure that this plan works again in 2026 because it's obviously a really big deal to rezone and it can be disruptive for a district. So I did wanna just emphasize, we're going, we'd be going from 11 schools right now that have a lot of different grade configurations to nine schools in fall 2023. That would be six elementary schools and three middle schools. And then in fall 2026, we would be going to eight schools, six of those same elementary schools and then just two middle schools. And it's because while we wanna build that new PEC for about 550 students, we, until that's built, we would house the students or have homes for the students in two separate buildings. So that's why there's the difference in years. And it also in the end highlighted in red, it shows that right now we don't have any new buildings, but we're hoping to get one new building. Any questions about how we got here or where we're heading here? So what I wanted to update you all on today, Anthony and I wanted to update you on was a big decision that we have to make and that is about what are eventually in 2026, the two middle school buildings gonna be? We're planning for one building to be either the current PEC or the new PEC and I'll go into that more. And we're, and we're planning for the second building would be either Dunahue, Kelly or Sullivan. And that's what is a big focus of this, of a community conversation in August, September and October. And then this just also emphasizes once again, like we want our changes in 2023 to work for 2026. We would need to, why it's complicated is because we would need to vacate PEC while it was demolished and being rebuilt. And that, but the good thing is, one good part is whatever students would be attending that second building in 2026 can start attending there already in 2023. And we'll go more into more detail. So on the next slide, oh, sorry, you guys didn't see that big decision slide. And then now I'm on slide 15, which says building one, current slash new PEC. Once again, we're pursuing a new middle school for about 550 students. That top right photo is what looks like what is PEC now. The bottom was one of the rendering from the architects back when we tried to do this in 2019 of what a new PEC could look like. And we're hope, we don't exactly know, but we're hoping that a new school would be built by fall 2026. If the funding wasn't approved either by the MSBA or City Council, then we would just need to use the existing PEC building. There's a middle school building committee of which Erin Brunel and Josh Garcia and Anthony Soto are all serving on. We just recently hired Answer Advisory for our O P M and we have an opportunity on September 14th to present to one of the MSBA subcommittees. So we'll, and then we just found out about this also, we'll be able to update you more on the middle school building process next month. But for our discussion on the next slide, building two, I wanted to share with you what the common features are across the building. So the biggest thing, the biggest reason why these three buildings were chosen was because they have the same number of traditional sized classrooms. There are biggest schools other than PEC, which is super duper large, but there's 33 classrooms in each school. So they all fit the same expected amount of enrollment. And in summary, they're, they're decent, they're reasonable buildings. All, all are reasonable options for middle school children to be in here. On this slide, you see sufficient square footage. Those classrooms are a reasonable size. There's space for gym, art, music, world languages, STEM, other enrichment. The cafeteria is large enough. There's enough bathrooms. There's good outdoor space. There's spaces within the schools. It's, it varies, but there's spaces for middle school, community gatherings, either for teachers or students. Good lighting and all have had recent facility updates. So they're all pretty reasonable schools to be considered for a middle school. On the next slide, it begins to show some of the differences between these buildings just based on when it was built, you know, small classrooms that could be pulled for, used for pullout space, the overall difference in square footage, capacity, the number of exits. So once again, you see some variance here, but it's, it's not enough to really put any of these buildings out of the running as a good middle school building. On page 18, slide 18, you can read more about recent building improvements, which includes things from air conditioning to partial roof replacements, windows. We list the potential relative strengths for each building as a middle school. You know, for example, at Dunahue, you could build partitions in large open spaces. There's interior courtyards. There's spacious playing fields. You know, Kelly has two gyms, which is nice. The traffic flow around Kelly is good. You know, Sullivan, but there's some nicer art and music spaces. All those are just relative strengths though. They're, they're not just big enough features in, in my opinion to really make it obvious which one would be the right middle school choice. And, and of course, it's not my choice, but it's the superintendent's choice and, and our responsibility to educate the public. And then there's some potential drawbacks for some as a middle school considering location or walkers like, or one school feeling more like an elementary school, but once again, nothing, you know, really jarring here. And then on slide 19, I just made some notes about the academic program. Someone I was talking to said, is, you know, is there anything different about these academic programs? You know, that are like one of these elementary schools that is just way outperforming the other two, that we would wanna keep it as an elementary school? And although there's differences in the academic programs, the performance levels are about similar. So once again, not a big enough reason probably to choose any one building over the other as a middle school. So finally, on page 20, I think this is what's gonna be most influential to people considering it is just your personal preference on the location. As you know, Dunahue is in the southernmost tip of the, of the city. It's furthest away from the city center. It is nice that there's two housing complexes nearby for walkers, but otherwise it's less densely populated. It is off of a busy street. It's two miles from PEC, which I just note for, in terms of, you know, that would be the other middle school location. And then personal preference, some people like that there would be a middle school building option farther away from downtown. Others prefer that it, it remain an elementary school, especially for those families that are within walking distance.
Erin, I have a question. Can you send us this slide? Cause I don't have it in my packet and I really can't read it from where I am on the screen.
Do you want me to like send it to you after this meeting?
No, after the meeting's fine, please, but just yes.
For Kelly, which is in the middle in purple, as you know, it's located in the, one of the most densely populated parts of our community in the Flats neighborhood, just southeast of downtown. There, it's near multifamily housing and industrial space. It does sit away from busy streets, which is nice for traffic flow. It also is two miles from PEC. Some people like that it would be a middle school that would be easily accessible by many students' families. Others prefer that, that, that be true if it, as an elementary school. Some people dislike the perception of using an existing older building in a historically higher needs community as a middle school. If a new one is built, other people feel like the location and accessibility kind of outweighs that. And then finally, in green, looking at Sullivan, it is located as just northwest of the highway. There are also two housing complexes nearby, which is good for walkers. It is on a busy street, Jarvis. It's a little bit closer to PEC, 1.7 miles, but you know, still not easily walkable. Some people like that it's downtown or away from downtown rather, and other people prefer that it remains a elementary school. So those are some of the just differences. Now, we are gonna have, so my, on slide 21, the major takeaway here is the physical buildings of Dunahue, Kelly and Sullivan are comparable and they all are reasonable options to be considered as middle schools or as elementary schools. Therefore, I do think it's gonna be more about which build, which, what are people's individual preferences? We're gonna do a lot of community outreach. I'll skip ahead to slide 23 in order to get input on this. The rezoning task force, which Gustavo is, is serving on and I appreciate that very much so. And on Dr. Mahoney, as well as many others, including family members, is meeting in September. We're having staff meetings at every school with pre-K to eight students to get their input, both on the reassignment policy and which school should be a middle school. We're hosting these family and community meetings, two are virtual and two are in person. I really wanna highlight the dates of the in-person ones, Wednesday, September 14th at 5 o'clock at Kelly and Thursday, September at Holy Oak High at 5:30. We're gonna have supervised, fun-free activities from Learn in Motion and the YMCA for kids in pre-K to eight. So we're hoping that the activities are, are fun so that families will be coming for the activities and we'll also then stay to listen and learn more and share their opinion about rezoning. We'll have food and we're also gonna be offering free buses, which we'll, we'll, we'll work out a schedule and publicize those. We're going to, you know, we were strong out at the back to school event this past weekend. The family engagement team has been at more than 40 events over the past few months and are gonna continue to be a very strong presence at the back to school events and open houses. We have a stakeholder survey that opened. It's super short. Encourage people to take that. We'll be doing more heavy pub, publicizing of that in late September after people have more of a chance to learn about the options. And then we'll, to next, next school committee meeting, I'm gonna, Anthony and I will present three different scenarios to you. So right now, today, we talked about just the differences between the three middle school building options. But there's a whole scenario with a lot more than just the middle schools, the choices. So we'll present in more detail to you the three, the three scenarios to get your input. And we have a retreat scheduled with you all in late October and we really appreciate that time. We were able to find a time that no one had a conflict. So I hope that everyone can attend and that we're gonna, what we're gonna do to take to you, not only to get your opinion there, but we're gonna summarize for you all these steps along the way. The principal meeting, the cabinet meeting, the task force, the community meetings, what the different groups are saying about their preferred preferences in, in terms of both the building and the scenario. So at this point, I would love, Anthony and I would love to open it up for comments, questions, feedback, either on the information presented today or on the outreach efforts to make sure that it's well publicized and people have an opportunity to, to share their voice.
I saw Mr. Wellenhan with his hand up earlier, so I'll go to him and I see Ms. Wilson also.
Thank you. Real quick, just on the comparisons for the buildings. Square footage is increase. Dunahue, 70,000, Kelly, 86,000, Sullivan, 112. But the capacity is about the same. How come Sullivan, like even though the square footage is a lot larger, the, the capacity is, is actually smallest? Is there like wasted space in that building?
Not wasted, but they have, you know, art spaces. They have, you know, they may have a, a bigger courtyard. They may have a bigger gym than, than Dunahue has. Dunahue has a real tiny gym.
Yep, nice play there.
So when we look at capacity, we count the number of home class, homeroom classrooms. And, you know, we look at the, you know, maximum class size that we'd like to see and that's how we determine the capacity. Thank you.
Yeah, and just so, if folks were looking at that slide 17, and we're not trying, just to emphasize, like, we're not trying to get to maximum capacity or anything like, we're not trying to get to maximum fill, fill every space. We just use some like reasonable class size estimates. And we use that same estimation across all the buildings for the rezoning process. So if anyone was really curious about those assumptions, I can email them to you. I think I also understand from Whitney that hallway space is a big contributing factor to the square footage as well.
Yeah.
So if there's kind of more hallways that will result in, yeah.
Ms. Wilson?
So I just wanna applaud the amount of effort, time and really reflective, thoughtful process that's been, you know, going on so far and the outreach to the community, making sure that everyone, that we're hearing from everyone, that we're trying to get as much input as possible into this plan. And I really just applaud, you know, everyone on, with this effort.
Thank you. I mean, one of, one of our equity commitments is to, and make sure we incorporate the voices of all in, in important decisions. And I think that, you know, I wanna commend Aaron. Aaron lives out that commitment better than, she models what that looks like. So
She does.
Anytime, you know, any of our cabinet members are making a decision or doing anything, Aaron's always the one to say, what was your process for incorporating the voices of those that, that are impacted? So it's, it's part of the HPS culture. So, uh, it's, it's part of the HPS culture now, but but Erin really models that well. Thank you, Erin. And thank you for your comment.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Soto, when is that?
Thank you to the rezoning working group and task force that really put a lot of time on this too. There's like, you know, seventy-five to a hundred people probably behind this.
And that's what I meant by getting people involved.
Yeah. Thank you.
When is our September meeting, Mr. Soto?
What was that?
When is our September meeting?
When is our September meeting?
Okay, thank you. Missed it somewhere.
Great. Alright, so the last part of the superintendent report, I'll try to get through this quickly. Um, because you all have saw a rough draft or a, a, a soft release of our um, of our strategic plan. Uh, we've done some work over the summer to refine it a little bit. Um, and I wanted to make sure that, um, you guys all had a chance to see it before we release it. Our plan is to release it to the full public tomorrow. We wanted to make sure we brought it to the school committee first, so. Um, our strategic plan, the next slide is is called moving forward together. And and I truly believe this is a plan by Holy Okers, um, that was developed with Holy Okers for Holy Okers. Uh, um, that's why, uh, that's why we titled it moving forward together. Um, and I wanna look at this quote on this next slide. Uh, something we came across, uh, Beth Gage actually found this online. Um, and and it really resonated with with the way we did our strategic planning process. It's nothing about us without us is for us. And I wanna say that I don't attribute this to receivership because I saw a video in nineteen ninety-two that when, when Superintendent Counter was here and Holy Oak was, um, the spotlight of national news when they were doing prop, you know, they were making significant budget cuts. Um, the way people in that video talk about Holy Oak Public Schools still hear thirty years later, people talking about Holy Oak Public Schools the same way. For some reason, there is this division amongst some members of the community and the school district. And I really wanna work hard to change that. I really wanna work hard with our families, with our city leaders, with, with, with everyone in the community. Again, I, I think receivership has, uh, initially, I'll be honest with you, I thought receivership brought that tension and that division. I was like, but then I saw that video and I was like, wait a minute, back in nineteen ninety-two, there were still people feeling that way about those kids and that system, right? Um, I don't know how to do it, but I, but I wanna make a commitment and I really want, I really hope this, this community uh, embraces the, the, the thought of, of really working together to, to lift uh, this school district and make sure our students get a high quality education. Which really leads into, uh, our new slogan, juntos podemos, together we can. Um, as many of you know, we, uh, we went through, uh, uh, an engagement process to develop this. And and I'm a firm believer that if we, if we work together with our colleagues, if we work together with our students, if we work together with our community partners and our city leaders, that we can do great things to make sure that our students get a high quality education. Um, you know, if, if that division is gonna continue to exist, we're gonna work hard to get through that. But it's just a little easier when we work together. So we did go through a process, many of you are aware, we heard from about fifteen hundred people throughout that process. And it, it was all guided by what's working well in Holy Oak Public Schools, what needs to be improved and uh, what suggestions do you have for the future? So, uh, that's what guided, you know, our, my entry, our entry plan process and then what led to the strategic planning, uh, development process. And this next slide, really, uh, this next slide talks about three of the most important pieces of our strategic plan. Um, and our vision, our vision is our North Star. This is what we strive to, to be. Um, I'm not gonna sit here and tell you that this is what we're doing right now and that every kid is, is getting this. But it's what we want Holy Oak Public Schools to be. Our vision is that HPS is a high performing school system where students reach their full potential, educators inspire, families are partners and the community thrives. I recognize that that's not the experience that all of our kids are getting right now, right? But it is what our vision is for Holy Oak Public Schools and where we need to get to. Our mission simply states why we exist. Through an equitable, high quality education and trusting relationships, all Holy Oak students develop the skills and access the opportunities to graduate high school ready for life, career and college. That doesn't mean that our kids are gonna choose to go to college. What it means is that we have an obligation to make sure that if they want to go to college, that that option is there for them and that we're, we've prepared them for that. You know, um, the mayor does a really good job talking about the education you get in Holy Oak. Um, and it's, you, you know, you're not getting an education just in school. You're getting an education in your community. We, we really build strong character in all of our kids. Um, I know firsthand, um, having been a graduate of Holy Oak Public Schools, not only what this school system has done for me, but what this community has done for me and what type of person it's made me. And and I only strive to, to return that favor and make sure all kids are getting that, a, a similar experience. Our core beliefs, um, many of these beliefs were, were part of my own core beliefs. And I'm so happy that, that the committee, um, the task force that we had working on this also embraced this as the core beliefs of, uh, uh, core values and core beliefs, um, of Holy Oak Public Schools. And the first one, first and foremost, is that students are at the center of everything we do. Students are at the center of everything we do. So you hea, you heard me say this before, you probably gonna hear me say it a hundred times over. Uh, you know, there are often times where, where, where we make decisions that are good for students that adults might not necessarily agree with, but please know that, that at the center of every decision we make, um, we think about students, uh, first. And and I truly believe that if that's the way we approach um, our work every day, then then we're, we'll be in a good place. This next core belief is that every child can and will learn. We have to believe in our students. We have to challenge our students. We have to have high expectations for our students. And it starts with, with believing that they can and they will learn. We can't sit here and say, oh, they got a tough at home or the, you know, the, the parent, there's no struggle or this. I, I've heard a million things as to what, what is going on in Holy Oak Public Schools. We have to believe that our kids can and will learn. School is a joyful place of discovery, support and belonging. We, again, not something that I feel every student is experiencing, but this is what we have to believe in our hearts and strive to make sure that our school communities are doing that for our students. Uh, another core belief is that students and staff hold high expectations of themselves and of each other. That, uh, a belief that trusting relationships lead to successful partnerships. And lastly, that our equity commitments are enacted in our daily work. So, you know, me, I've read down the list of all of our equity commitments. Ultimately, where we need to be is that that's just the way we do work. That, it's how we make decisions. You heard Mr. Mogel. It shows up every day in how we do work, how we hire people, how we develop our budget, how we reach out to our parents. Everything we do is grounded in, in the equity commitments that we have here at Holy Oak Public Schools. This is a part that you have not seen yet. Um, and I think, I gotta say, this is what we worked on over the summer. Got a group of like thirty or forty people, uh, met in the high, um, Holy Oak High School Library. And we worked on refining, um, our learner profile, which, um, you know, many districts have the, the profile of a graduate. But I especially, uh, enjoyed this process. We had students. I obviously, I was quick to go sit down at the student table and it was, uh, it was really refreshing just to hear our students be a part of, of developing this learner profile that we've been, uh, that we worked on over the summer, over the summer. So as part of this work, like I said, um, um, we, we, we engaged many different people. Uh, there were teachers, there were counselors, there were students. Uh, there were principals, but these are the qualities that we wanna make sure as a, as a student goes through Holy Oak Public Schools, we wanna make sure that they, they, uh, they develop these characteristics. And we, we've, we use the acronym REACH. So one of the, the first one is around reflecting daily on their learning and making sure they persist. Making sure we build students that have the ability to persevere through challenges. E, we wanna make sure we, we're building students, that our students are, have em, embrace empathy and kindness in a world that, you know, is, is very divisive. We need to make sure, I think this gets at the, the life component of our, of our vision, right? We want them, our mission to, to, for them to be ready for life, um, career and college. This empathy and kindness, we wanna build good people and, and, and that's important. Um, we want our students to apply critical thinking. Um, we want them to communicate effectively. And we want them to help themselves and others. So, uh, that last one is, is really around uh, building lifelong learners, you know, uh, you know, wh- when they go through uh, their education in Holy Oak Public Schools, we, we hope that, you know, they've learned to really help themselves um, and and continue to be learners. So this, to me, was one of my favorite, one of my favorite parts of the, the strategic planning process was developing these, uh, this learner profile. Um, talk about our equity commitments. Again, um, uh, you've, you've all seen these before. We intentionally build a community that is anti-racist, inclusive and culturally responsive. Um, and I won't go down through, through the entire list because you've all seen these. Um, but I, I'll just say that there has been, uh, uh, you know, throughout my, the, the last school year, I heard from staff and from leaders that there was this, this, with the relay work that we were doing, that there was this feeling that this work was on hold or that it went away. And, and I wanna openly apologize for anything that, that we as a leadership team did to create that belief or, or that, that thought in people's head that we weren't doing the race and equity work anymore. Um, we are committed to making sure, um, as I mentioned, as Mr. Mogel, who's the principal and, and, uh, the principal at, at Morgan School, he's, you know, that's his life's work. He's really passionate about it and has agreed to help guide, you know, with, with the equity imperative, help us, help guide us through uh, making sure that, that we build a sustainable, um, professional development that ultimately has an impact on the classroom. So, um, you know, one of the things that we had done previously is made sure that our principals got educated on this, that our that our cabinet team had gotten educated on this, but it never really penetrated, you know, I you talk to a custodian of ours or you talk to one of our, uh, main office employees, they, they never received anything. And I, I just strongly believe, I know what, what engaging down in, in this equity journey has done for me personally. It's made me a better person, it's made me a better father and it's changed the way I think and approach this work. And it's powerful. We have so many people in the building that aren't the principals that have touch points with our kids. And we need to make sure we're committed to, to, um, uh, making sure we're, we're doing everything we can to dismantle any structures that are getting in the way, um, of our students that need the most. We worked on developing goals over the summer, um, many of their in-year packet, um, and, and in a strategic plan. So some of them around star early literacy. Uh, we wanna make sure that, uh, students are gaining uh, one point three years of grade level growth every year. Um, we wanna decrease chronic absenteeism. I won't go through all of them, but as part of the plan, we've named some of the things that we're gonna be looking at and monitoring as we go. Um, you know, I've, we've, we've, we're making sure that the school committee gets, uh, which ultimately the community and the school committee end up getting a quarterly update on, on all of the, the, um, a, all of the goals that, not goals, but, uh, um, all of our priority areas and the projects that we're working on that are gonna help us reach these goals. Um, so throughout this process, we landed on, uh, some priority areas that we wanna focus on. Um, and then within each of the priority areas, we've developed a strategy to help, uh, meet the goals. The first one is around early literacy. We know that research shows that, uh, reading proficiently by the end of third grade is a critical benchmark so that students make that, that switch from learning how to read to then reading how to learn. Um, and I know that you've heard this before, like as school committee members, it's everybody talks about how important early literacy is. But this year is the first time that we're actually focusing on it, providing professional development for it. You met, uh, Kena Arbu. We have, we now have a director who's sole, sole, only looking at early literacy. So, um, we're not just talking about it. We're, we're act, you can see that we're allocating resources and designing professional development so that, um, you know, we just had a kickoff meeting with our principals who have embraced the, the early literacy training. We're working with Hill Literacy on, on developing our leaders uh, and the science, the, in the science of reading. Uh, so it, it's, it, this is gonna really be powerful, but like I said, we're not just saying it, we, when you look at what, how we've developed our budget and some of the shifts that we've made as a leadership team and our professional development, um, we're, we're being intentional and focused around this initiative. Uh, the second one is around learning experiences and ensuring that schools are providing rigorous culturally responsive instruction in all content areas, um, to all students. So we know that's important because we gotta make sure that we're setting the ideal conditions and providing the appropriate support to ensure that our schools flourish. Um, so, you know, we talked about the schedule, um, everything from looking at how we're spending our time, how much time we're spending on ELA, how much we're spending on math, what the learning environment looks like. Um, and, and, uh, grounded in the equity work that we talked about. So you can see here, there's multiple strategies under this learning experiences, which includes redesigning the school schedules that we just talked about. One of the strategies that we just talked about, the re, rezoning and reorganizing and going back to that elementary, middle school model. Uh, and then making sure that, um, I, I'm a firm believer that our principals are, are critical. One of the most important things we do at central offices is try to hire great principals and give them the support that they need because they're the ones that are gonna help create the change that we wanna see in classrooms. There's one in here around, um, inclusion. Um, uh, we need to provide differentiated in-classroom supports so that students with diverse learning needs thrive. Um, research shows that, uh, that research shows that the benefits and laws require that students are, are educated in the least restrictive environments have shown success. So, uh, we talked about it earlier where we, you know, we, we wanted, we had principals go through a process of developing their budget and trying really hard to get at inclusion. I can tell you right now, there's, uh, there's a few schools that are really building, uh, embracing this model. Um, we have, you know, twenty-eight percent of our students identified as, uh, having learning. Um, uh, ident, uh, you know, requiring an IEP. And I think, uh, I'm not, uh, another sig, another, another significant amount of students that are, are English language learners. And many of them are, are duly identified. And many of them are are duly identified, so they're some cases, they're getting pulled out for special ed and for ELL services, all all the while missing core instruction. And we want to make sure that we do the best we can to provide those supports in the classroom. We're not getting rid of secret services. But we want to make sure everybody has a responsibility in 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 providing tier-one instruction and creating that culture. Um, it's a different approach. It's not one that we've we've done in Holyoke um throughout the entire district. But it's an approach that that we firmly believe is gonna is gonna really change the game um for a lot of our students. Uh, so that that could be even simply looking at when students are getting pulled out, right? Are they getting pulled out during their ELA block? Are they getting pulled out during their intervention block? Are they getting pulled out during their math block? So just be really being intentional around um how we how we design instruction so that we get the best experience for our kids and and try to limit the amount of time they're they're getting pulled out from from tier-one instruction. The other strategy is is supporting the whole child. We know that um, you know, school is more than just about learning. Uh, we know that there's a a social emotional component to uh to what we do in in our schools. Uh, and we need to make sure that uh students with students with mental health needs and uh students get uh the social emotional support that they need. Uh, and we need to make sure that our our learning environments uh um do that and that everyone has a sense of of belonging. You know, I think that's one of the most important things that we can do in in a school system is just make sure that students feel like they belong. Then the last one is around our educator development, uh growing and retaining talented and diverse staff. Um, while we, you know, we're well above the state average for having in terms of the the amount of teachers that of color that we have. Um, you know, six years ago, we were at about eleven percent and we're up to twenty-eight percent. Um, love to stay there and and keep growing from there. Um, and we need, we know that um in addition to what I said earlier around the principal being a critical piece to to um to making sure we do this work. So our, you know, the obvious ones are our teachers and our staff that are actually working with kids. We want to make sure that we do the best we can to retain them, to train them and and for them to just love working in Holyoke, which many of them do. You know, we just did uh those retention bonuses. I hate the the word retention. Because for many of our staff, it wasn't a retention bonus. It was many of our staff choose to work here and they want to work here and they're Holyoke lifers. They're not going anywhere. So that was more of a thank you to them for for staying with us and for uh, you know, overcoming the adversity of of that that and the challenges that the pandemic has given us. And that concludes our presentation around the the uh strategic plan. Uh, I want to give a special shout out to everybody that was involved. We had, you know, fifteen hundred plus students' families. Uh, we had uh thirty-one members on our advisory committee. We had uh fourteen, a member of fourteen on our steering committee. And then uh twenty-five workshop participants and and of course, the eleven cabinet members of my team. Um, and and some partners that had helped uh create this. So uh, it's I think it's a very great plan. It's it was uh created with a lot of different stakeholders, uh to your point, uh Ms. Wilson. Um, and and you know, I hope that that staffing the staffing challenges that we're looking at, while we're we have more staff than we have ever had. Um, we should have already had, you know, academic intervention teachers. We should have already had coaches and all of those things that that um, you know, districts that that had resources were able to, you know, im- implement uh a long time ago. And now that we have the resources, I'm confident with this plan and the resources that we have that we're really gonna uh have positive uh experiences with our students and we're going to work really hard to do that.
Rosalie, had a question?
Just a statement. Um, Mrs. Soto, you said you graduated from Dean.
Ninety-nine.
Okay. Um, it would be remiss of me to sit here and not say anything good about Dean. Dean has had a bad rap for years. And a lot of the stuff, as we say in the military, was bullpucky. And the thing about Dean is both my sons graduated from Dean and they had an excellent education. And every job they took, they became supervisors. And it's unfortunate because it's like in a big family where one kid gets blamed for everything. So it takes the spotlight off of off of you. And I think that's, I've always fought for Dean. I was working year for years with Dean and I'm still going to work for Dean and I love all the schools in Holyoke. But I could not sit here and let that go by, that Dean was a horrible school because it was not. Okay, so thank you for letting me voice my opinion.
Yeah, I hope I didn't say that because I love Dean.
No, you didn't.
And I think that Dean's made a huge turnaround in the last six years though.
The only room in this world is
First we got, when we first got here, uh when I first got here, six, seven years ago, Dean had about a hundred and eighty-three students. And we're we're now um close to four hundred students with many on a waiting list. So um
And I'm not saying Dean was perfect, but the only room in this world is room for improvement.
Yep.
Okay, so, end of sermon.
That was a great presentation. Excellent. Thank you so much. All that, that was a lot of hard work, very very grassroots and thoughtful and um, clear. Thank you, Anthony, and the whole team that put that together. Very much looking forward to see how we can continue to honor what's came out of that, work together to implement it, so. Any questions from committee members, comments, concerns? Ms. Wellin.
Real quick, yeah, um, thank you for the um presentation and um your goals and everything were great. Again, just kind of back to what Mrs. Wilson said, just on the staffing, you know, do we have enough staffing to um reach your goals and you know, that's my only concern right now.
Yeah, I, you know, um, the staffing models that we have are to support this plan, so we're we're not at a hundred percent right now. Um, you know, I I recognize that, you know, we have a goal in there to increase our retention by two points or two percentage points. Um, that's gonna be challenging, like I don't that that's what we want to strive for, but looking at what I'm looking at, I don't know that we're going to reach that. But it doesn't mean that, you know, I'm when we looked at setting these goals, um, we wanted to be, hold ourselves to high expectations too, just like we want hold students to high expectations. We want to make sure that we're we're setting goals that aren't just easy to reach, you know, that they're that they're um, they're reasonable but also attainable. Um, I'm I'm not going to sit here and say we're going to meet our goals every, you know, every year, but we strive to do that for sure.
Go ahead, Eldred.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Alright, so being that there's no further discussion or questions, we're going to go ahead and move on to new business. And the first um issue on the agenda is receiver superintendent evaluation. I'm sure everybody has received it and was able to review it. So at this point, um are we, um, I know, uh, Mr. Mayor, you had asked that we we put this onto the agenda, so I'm thinking that it's um for the school committee to vote to accept accept the communication from the from Desi, the evaluation of the superintendent.
I'm making some seconded.
So just first, I I wanted to check in with our chair to make sure that 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 was the purpose of the
Yeah, sorry, because I know it's been a little bit, that was a recent evaluation completed for Superintendent Soto by the commissioner, correct? Okay.
Correct.
And so what I want to do and 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 I leave this with the wishes of the body. Can, is there a committee we can move this to for further discussion um and a report back? Um, if if it wants, if if folks want to dissect it, or did folks receive it, read it comfortable and are happy and want to acknowledge it, um then we can do it. I think there's already a motion on the floor and second it to just receive it.
So we do have a motion by Miss um Brunel, uh Fontaine Brunel, seconded by Ms. Wilson. Um, is there any discussion?
Mr. Calamore.
I can't, so if you can call them.
Uh, we got Mr. Calamore and then we got Brunel.
In discussion, uh, should we refer this to uh committee to review and then come back with a recommendation on how to go about this because uh it's a it's a lengthy lengthy thing to look through. But there are questions in here that, you know, I think should be answered by the superintendent when we get into discussing his report to Commissioner Riley.
So it's an evaluation that's already been completed by the commissioner. There isn't any real action from us. What I wanted was just to share it with the body and the public to be transparent with it. If there is feedback that we want to offer based on what we've read, we can certainly send uh a a letter to Commissioner Riley or whatever the case. I just wanted to just publicly acknowledge it and receive it. Um, and if there is further discussion or questions, comments, uh to allow that opportunity for this body to ask those questions, um and we can certainly send it to Mr. Riley and see what he responds with. That was the intent. I, Brunel.
Thank you. Um, so before receivership, I had the privilege of chairing the committee that was responsible for reviewing the superintendent. Um, so while I while I support the idea of this going to a subcommittee for further evaluation, I don't know what subcommittee it would go to because we don't technically have leadership and accountability anymore. Um, but, I mean, it just seems Did I lose you guys? Sorry, my grandma
Nope, we got you.
Call, my computer rings. I apologize for that. Um, it just from a school committee person's view, I just don't see what purpose it serves really for the commissioner who appointed the man, with all due respect, Soto, we love you, glad you're here. I I just don't see like what 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 we really get from a review of somebody who appointed somebody to the job. I I would like to see us get back to having a review done within district, right? So that way we can evaluate and discuss and see, um, you know, what matters to us more than what matters to the commissioner. Um, so obviously, I made the motion to receive the report. We received it. Um, you know, I would love to have the opportunity to discuss it further within the committee. I don't know what what structure we would go about doing that in. Um, but I would just like to, you know, just for the record of saying that, you know, as a body, it would be nice to to be involved in the in the review process, I guess.
Wilson.
I I second that. I think that, um, you know, we're making progress as a school committee. Um, and while um in receivership, you know, we we don't have certain, I'm gonna say rights. Um, I think that, you know, we should at least be asked from our perspective um how things are going and be allowed to submit a report as a school committee, which, um, you know, Mr. Riley can either accept, you know, throw in the trash bin if he wants to. But um we are becoming a strong entity who are and we're working in collaboration. And I think that would be something that, you know, the commissioner would like to see personally.
Superintendent Soto.
Yeah, so part of um, part of my contract with the state is is that I do an annual three sixty feedback. Um, the state had hired a consultant to develop a questionnaire for this three sixty feedback. And and I I believe four members of the school committee had the opportunity to um to provide that feedback along with members of my team, some prin- I tried to get, you know, three sixty feedback is not just from the people that report to you, like, you know. Uh, you want to get people that are colleagues, you want to get school committee members, you want to get um maybe a a couple principals, but I I just wanted to let you know that that is a part of the process and before my evaluation is written by the commissioner, they take that three sixty survey results and into consideration. I personally would be happy this upcoming school year when when I get that three sixty to send it to the entire school committee. Um, so that that way, you know, when they do sit down and do my evaluation, uh, you have an opportunity to to uh to assess how I did. But in terms of why this exists, it's part of the receivership statute, like the state, it's written into that that statute for receivership statute that the state has to provide the school committee with with an evaluation of the 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 superintendent. Um, by, you know, I remember like by July one, like it's written into law, like you guys have to get a copy of my evaluation.
Mr. Calamore, do you have a question?
Yes, uh, talking to here, uh we have a motion on the floor right now.
Yes, sir.
We want to amend that motion to uh review review this report and then come back with a recommendation and
There's currently a motion on the table to formally receive it. You're asking, I guess that's the maker of the motion, if you want to amend it, receive and to send to a committee for further review and evaluation?
Yes, I'm just not sure what committee we would send it to.
What other committees we have? We have
We have, um, we have Joint Committee of School Committee and uh City Council. We have finance and we have, um
Diversity and
Not procedures, but
Policy.
Policies. Policy, thank you. I'm like, there's a P word, um, policy procedure.
Diversity and inclusion.
Yes, and that one as well. Sorry, guys. Obviously, I don't know all of them, but
I'm gonna let you guys know what we have. So it's the Joint School Committee, which, um, Erin, you are the chair. The Policy Subcommittee, which Rebecca Burks is our chair and will now be chaired by Ellie Eleanor Wilson. Then we have the Finance Subcommittee, which is chaired by Mr. Wallingham. And then Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, which is chaired by Ms. Feliciano Sims. Now, I did send out back months ago uh who wanted to be part of the leadership accountability. The question was uh what much say do we have in that, being that we do not have um, we don't have um control of our district. Um, but as I said, we're trying to move forward to get out of receivership, right? And so we need to start working like school committee members work. And these are subcommittees, whether or not we have a right or a vote, a vote, right, to change anything, at least we're putting in our two cents.
Right.
So that committee never was created. It's only those four committees, subcommittees, that we currently have.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Erin.
What if we, um, vote to receive it and then put this also back on the agenda for the next meeting for further discussion? We, uh, school committee members can make a commitment within ourselves to read it, review it. You come up with any questions, concerns or anything that we have going on. We can revisit it at the next meeting if necessary and submit anything to the commissioner as needed. Um, unless people already feel like they've had the adequate time to review it. I know I can say I have not. Um, I'd be lying if I did.
Uh, Wallingham.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I I read it. Um, I know that we're all talking that, you know, technically, we don't have, you know, the authority to appoint the superintendent. technically we don't have, you know, the authority to appoint the superintendent anymore. That being the case, I kind of feel that the commissioner values our opinion. That's my personal opinion. So I think that they value our opinion. So whether, whatever format the committee wants to agree to, I think, you know, whether in, in the full, full committee or subcommittee, I think if we can kind of pull our thoughts together and make either one common response or, you know, each member make their response, that's something that we can always do.
It sounds like a subcommittee, if we're going to be giving feedback, it sounds like a subcommittee more than kind of like an individual thing to me is what I'm hearing.
How do members feel about tabling it?
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead. There was a motion to accept, right? That's what we tried to accept. And then it was seconded. Are we gonna vote on that? If it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. We can always put in a motion to table it if that's what we want to do and bring it to the next meeting where then people would have had a chance to read it. And if they have any comments or questions on it.
So can we just, Mildred, can I just put in a motion to amend the the motion right now and just saying, I think Erin is right, that we accept the, accept the evaluation. And then if school committees have any questions regarding anything on here or want to have some feedback, I think it is great, right? Like Willihan said, the commissioner does want our comments, right? And that was one of the things he said, that he wanted us to be more proactive in our roles. I think this is where we work with Soto once again and say, hey, I read this. I did my due diligence as my role of school committee member and send you our feedback. And then we can have those discussions. So the motion is, is that we accept it and that we bring it back to the table on the next meeting with comments, questions to provide to the commissioner.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, so I'm just so you guys know, we can always put something on an agenda, right? And so it's like, we're saying two different things right now. We're saying we're gonna accept and then we're tabling.
So the motion is, is that we're going to, we are going to accept the, accept the evaluation and that if there's any further. Yeah, lay it on the table.
Second that motion.
Really, okay, so. I'm sorry, that's, okay.
I think perhaps accept is not the right language.
Received. So we receive, we will receive the motion, the evaluation. And then if there's any further discussions that we communicate it with Soto or at the next meeting.
Okay. Let's.
You just table it.
Table it.
Okay, because this is just, yeah, I think, I think it's just getting too confusing. And put it on the table, right, lay it on the table. You guys have all the time to read it. It'll be on next month's agenda. If you have concerns or comments that then you want that expressed in a letter to the commissioner. At that time, we will put in a motion to send a communication with the feedback, concerns that were expressed at our September 19 meeting in regards to the, the evaluation conducted from July 2021 to June 2022 on the receiver, Mr. Anthony Soto. How does that sound?
Fabulous.
Yes.
Sounds good.
So then the motion, so somebody needs to make a motion to table.
I make a motion to table. I second it.
Okay, so there's a motion with a second to table the superintendent receiver evaluation. And bring it forth to the next school committee meeting on September 19. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chair, anybody with their hands raised for discussion?
No one has your hands raised.
Okay, so because there's two members on Zoom, we need to do a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Fave.
Yes.
Now.
Yes.
Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams.
See.
Ms. Rivera-Cologne.
Yes.
Feliciano.
Yes.
Mr. Wallihan.
Yes.
Mr. Calamore.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
And student rep, Mr. Kennedy.
Yes.
So just to clarify, thank you to the student rep. But for voting on this, on any votes, only counting votes would be members of the school committee, the elected officials. The students are in a participatory role, but they're non-voting members. Ms. Garcia, did you hear what I?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move to the next item and that's the school committee member ethics. So I'm just gonna give a brief update on what this is about. This is file BCA under the school committee policies. The policy manual that can be located online through our school website as well as we are on the MAS C website as well. This was brought to my attention by a school committee member, Wallihan. It would be file BCA. It's the school committee member ethics. After I reviewed, the reason that he had brought it up is because the wording is not, it's not gender neutral. So how can we make it more gender neutral? So I reviewed all our policies. I went through them and the whole policy manual is not gender neutral. Actually, our policies have not had a comprehensive review or update since the early 2000s. So there have been a lot of critical policy updates, including gender neutrality, language, protected class language, non-discrimination, harassment and retaliation policies. And other national laws driven updates have occurred in the past few years. And we are not up to date with any of those changes. I've looked at other school districts such as the Cape Cod district and they are up to date with theirs. I did notice where they have their gender neutrality. It does say his/her, so we are missing another. His/her, they/them. So I'm not sure how it can, you know, if that's something that we have to look at further looking into. So for me, I don't know what other members feel, but for Mr. Soto, I strongly recommend you consider contracting with MAS C to do a comprehensive review of our policies. And that any updates, especially with national laws, changes and policy updates, that we do that. Because we are very out of date. I don't know if anybody else has any comments, but to change just one file, file BCA, when they're all out of date. Does anybody have any questions, comments?
Mr. Calamore.
I agree with you, Mildred. You should ask MAS C to review our policy and return it to us with some suggestions.
So I think Mr. Calamore was just recommending that we move, move it to the policy subcommittee and to bring it back with recommendations? Is that what you?
No, no, I'm recommending that we send it to MAS C for review and return it back to us with their comments.
Is that a motion?
So Mr. Calamore, and I do apologize. So we do have a policy subcommittee. And I would like to see where the policy subcommittee, if Mr. Soto does agree, to contract with MAS C to, to do the comprehensive review is that they are working in collaboration with our policy subcommittee looking at all of our policies and making sure that we do any necessary updates that are needed. So that's where I was more gearing towards because it's important that we're part of that process as well, that it's not just an entity doing it. But that the school could, our policy subcommittee is as well just as active in that. So Mr. Soto.
Yeah, Ms. LaFave, I honestly thought that that's what the policy committee was doing the last, the last time we met, but for sure I would embrace working with the policy committee to, to review any changes that, that they feel we need to make in any of our policies. Formalizing. And I think if, if that means that the, the subcommittee would like to contract out with MAS C, I would, I would be open to looking at what something like that would cost and, and moving forward with it.
Okay, so then can we have a motion to?
We have another question here, Mildred.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I remember talking with Dr. Reich, you know, had to be four or five years ago about his, his concerns about our policies haven't been updated. So I think the policy committee just has to kind of review our internal policies, you know, in terms of suspensions and, you know, dress code. So those internal policies I think have to be discussed. I think Dr. Reich had kind of put that off the back burner. And but then as what this is, a favor saying, just the state, the state laws have changed. We don't think, I think she's of the opinion that our, our policy manual hasn't kept up to date with those changes in the state laws. And the national laws that change on probably a monthly basis. And just kind of reading it myself, I was just sort of embarrassed with the, you know, the, the way it's written is just he, he, he. It's just not gender neutral. I was really embarrassed for my, the, the current colleagues that I sit with here and just our past school members who were female, you know, Betty Lichtenstein and Marcella Kelly, you know, just, you know, names that were, you know, that have been involved in years. And, you know, the policy manual looks like it was written in the, you know, the 80s. I think the city council just contracted out to kind of change our charter to make that more with the times, getting rid of the he, he, he. So I think that's maybe one of our, maybe a resource. We can check with the city clerk and see who, who they hired to kind of review it. But then again, just kind of, you know, have the, have a go to the policy committee first. We can give our thoughts on it and then maybe send it to the state for their final review. Thank you.
So is a motion going to be made that we send it to the policy subcommittee?
We would need a motion.
So I will make the motion that we send it to the.
Calamore seconded. Seconded by Calamore.
Is there any discussion? No discussion? So roll call vote, please.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Ms. Fave.
Yes.
Now.
Can you hear me? Did you hear me? Yes?
Yes, I heard you. Ms. Brunel. Mr. Romero.
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams. Ms. Rivera-Cologne.
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano.
Yes.
Mr. Wallihan.
Yes.
Mr. Calamore.
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously to refer the discussion on reviewing our entire policies manual. And go from there, make sure it's updated. Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware who's on the policy subcommittee. So it's gonna be Yadilet, Vivera Colone, Rosalie Tensley-Williams, Eleanor Wilson and Usavu Romero. Those were the members that were part of it and that will continue on in that role. Yadilet, you were just appointed.
Lucky me.
You didn't get to choose this year. You just got put right in there. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and move on to the next agenda item and that is the November MAS C, MAS, MAS S. So for those that are unaware what MAS C stand for, it's the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And MAS S is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Annual Conference Election of delegates and alternate delegates to the delegate assembly. The meeting is held annually in Cape Cod. This year's meeting is going to be held from November 2nd to the 5th. The voting delegate, the first delegate that we will appoint will be the, the main voting delegate. We are given one delegate, one delegate to represent and to vote for Holyoke. And then we have an alternate delegate in case that the main delegate is unable to attend. Then the alternate delegate will be the one having the vote for, for Holyoke. And what you, they'll be doing is voting on the resolutions that have been brought forth to the resolutions committee and, and those will be heard at the annual assembly as well, as well as any bylaws changes that may have been submitted. I am so sorry. So is there a motion of our first, for our first delegate to the delegate assembly of the annual conference?
Motion?
I'm making a motion for Eleanor Wilson to be the delegate of the MAS C.
Second.
So we had a motion by Ms. Feliciano Sims and was that seconded by Mr. Wallihan? Okay, so the motion is for Ms. Eleanor Wilson to be the voting delegate to, for the MAS C, MAS S annual conference. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Calamore.
Oh, Mr. Calamore, okay.
I want to put up Mildred's name to be our delegate.
You can't, Mr. Calamore, I'm sorry. Okay, so just so that everybody is aware, I can, I cannot be put up for it. I am the current vice president for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So I am automatically and I'm the incoming president, president-elect. Ms. Feliciano Sims will already be attending as well. And as she is the chair of the Urban Division. So if you're looking for her to be an alternate or someone else is interested in being, attending the MAS C, MAS, MAS S conference, it's a great place for networking as well as learning more about the, the roles of a school committee. You talk about equity and all that, so. So I cannot be, but thank you for thinking of me, Mr. Calamore. Stop giving me more tasks.
Hold on, you're outside, Mr. Calamore?
No, I'm just wondering if the person that is nominated.
Accepts it.
Be able to do it, be able to go down for those, for those three or four days down at the Cape to. I know, I know. I, I understand that delegate and then we get to the alternate the same way. You don't want to vote for someone that just can't, for some reason can't, can't get down there. As long as they're committed that they can make it down there to be our delegate, I'm for it all the way.
Youth field hockey is over by then, so I will be able to attend.
So you're good, Lee?
Yes, I would be able to attend.
Rosalie, did you?
Alright, so we have the nomination that we're voting for Ellie Wilson to serve as the alternate.
It, no.
No, the, the it, the one.
She's the one.
The delegate.
The delegate. You're good, Mr. Calamore?
Alright, that's fine.
Alright, go ahead, Madam Vice Chair.
So can we get a roll call please?
Roll call.
Go.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams? Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Willehan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Okay, great, so motion passes unanimously. Now we need a motion for the alternate delegate. Is there an alternate delegate that is willing to attend the Annual Conference?
I make a motion.
A motion for?
Ms. Feliciano Sims to be the alternate.
Second.
Okay, so we, a motion by Ms. Tensley-Williams, seconded by who?
Mr. Willehan.
For Ms. Irene Feliciano Sims to serve as the alternate delegate to the Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion?
Irene? Are you able and willing and do you accept?
Absolutely, to do my due diligence for our school committee.
On behalf of the citizens of Holyoke, thank you.
Bless America.
Can we get a roll call please?
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams? Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Willehan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Great, motion passes unanimously. I'll make sure that I fill out the paperwork and send it to MASC so they are aware of who, what members will be attending to the Delegate Assembly. Next item on the agenda is approval of meeting minutes. I'm not sure if we just want to bulk together and do one single except vote?
I would make that motion, yes.
Second it.
Motion? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Brunel, seconded by Ms. Feliciano Sims to take them, what, it's out of the bundle, right?
Yes.
The Finance Subcommittee, May and June minutes? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Willehan? Yeah, thank you. The minutes from the Finance Committee are from March 21st and we had a good meeting between Mr. Soto and Mickey Buell. They gave a good presentation just on the school budget and the funding sources that we have, some of it from the COVID relief and how we're going to use those funds for our school district and I think it was, it was, well done, thank you.
Great. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. LaFave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley-Williams? Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Abstained.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Willehan?
Yes.
Mr. Calamore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Alright, we had, what is it, nine, nine yeses, one abstain?
Yep.
Okay, alright, motion passes unanimously. Going, moving on to ongoing business updates from subcommittees. I know I've forgotten this Brunel last month, or the month prior. So I know she had an update.
Yeah, so first I will bring up the School Committee, City Council Joint Committee. Just reminding my fellow members that if you have anything that you feel as though needs to be on the agenda for that meeting, I'm happy to schedule. We currently have nothing on the docket, but I would like to have a meeting in the next month or two to kind of catch up, catch up on some things. I don't know if you guys had all seen that the City Council made a vote to try to change the name of that committee. So I think it's important that we meet coming soon, so I'll update you guys on that. And then as co-chair of the School Building Committee, just to remind you all that we do have a meeting on Thursday, September 1st. We do meet via in-person and Zoom, so you're welcome to join. We're starting to finally progress. We're waiting for the MSBA, MSBA to have our big kickoff meeting. And as Erin Linville had mentioned, we have officially brought on the OP and Designer. So this next meeting will be a very informative meeting and it's really full steam ahead moving forward now that they've officially welcomed us into the process. So if anybody ever has any questions on the, what's happening with that, feel free to reach out. Thanks, Mildred.
What time is the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's at six? Six? Let me double check my calendar. I'll be right back with you on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's six to eight on the first.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to share the agenda if anybody wants a copy of the upcoming agenda once it's finalized.
That'd be great.
Very excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question, yeah, I know, Mrs. Brunel, do you want to comment just on the, the name change for the Subcommittee? I know they changed the, the name change for the Joint, Joint Committee that was sort of changed without any input from the School, School Committee.
Yeah, so Mildred and I will be discussing that further. She was looking into the legality of that. As far as the School Committee is concerned, we're required to have a Subcommittee of the Joint School Committee and City Council. So I, I can't really speak to what the City Council does in their own chambers. As far as we're concerned, it's the Joint School Committee, City Council meeting. If they would like to create an additional Subcommittee, they're more than welcome. I, I don't know if Ms. LaFave has any further comments on it personally. I, I don't understand why no one from City Council even bothered to reach out to us, ask opinions, notify us that this was even brought up. But that's kind of what tends to happen over there unfortunately, so you know, that committee does have two chairs. We have one on the City Council side and one on the School Committee side. It rotates year by year whose pervy it is to schedule the meetings, run the meetings, draft the meetings, agenda, you know, like it's the School Committee's turn to run those. So I will be calling one shortly, but as far as what the City Council did or does, I, I, I can't comment too much on it. I know it will be on the agenda when we have our next meeting and I know that Mildred was looking into, you know, like I said, as far as the School Committee goes and our structure, that's what we call that committee. I, I can't really comment as to what happens in City Council chambers.
Thank you.
So Mildred, you haven't had a chance to speak with Council President Todd, I'm assuming?
He did contact me and he said that they were gonna hold on it and go back to the original maker of it, who then reached out to me, I want to say days before the Fiesta Patronales and we had a discussion over the phone. I think there's still more that needs to be talked about because I don't believe they fully understand what the, the role really is. I, I understand where they want to go with this. They want to have a, a student, like youth involvement in the process. But as I explained to them, mainly what we send to the Joint Committee is the stuff that's needed to be discussed with the city because it impacts on the city side, just as it does in the educational side. So issues just like, you know, wanting to build a new school when we had issues in regards to the dogs going in and, you know, and when they were doing searches, different things like that that we, that we bring. One thing that I did explain to him is that for a long time, remember when Mayor, Mayor Morris wanted more youth voice and that's where it was supposed to be on the State Council side, which he never followed through on that. So if they're looking at the city, what they want to do to improve the city for the youth, then they can have their youth representative at their end and do their own committee. But when it comes to the Joint City Council School Committee, that's how that, that was built for that purpose. It's a communication between the educational aspect and the city aspect. Again, what, I understand that there's a lot that impacts our youth outside of school. That's a bigger issue that they have to, I think a Subcommittee would be great and I said, you know, if you'd like to see a School Committee member be a part of it, I'll reach out to board members and see which one wants to be a part of it. But when you're looking at that, you're also looking at, you're servicing the other youth that are in the community, so ones that are going to the charter, those that are going to, you know, like Catholic schools or out of district schools, which you can't talk about the education aspect because we have no right to, to make any voice on that. You know, when it comes to the charter, they have their own board members and Board of Trustees and it's the same as Paulo Ferreira. So I think that's where he was starting to understand a little bit, but there's still more talk that has, that has to happen.
So as far as systems is concerned, the City Council has a set of rules, guidelines for the council that they vote on and this committee, as well as all their other council committees are defined under these set of rules and I guess there was a councillor that recommended this name change for XYZ reasons, which you were just talking about, Mildred, and warrants further discussions, but just so that folks know, the council has the, it's not set by ordinance or charter, but it's a, and we used to, before receivership, the School Board, this body used to have a set of rules too and, and maybe something we, we should consider. It's, it's our, kind of like our standing bylaws, more or less, that helps define what our committees are and what Robert rules and orders we like to follow when making motions and tabling things and whatnot. But they have a set of rules that councillors are able to put in motions to, to make amendments and change accordingly and, and that's what happened. Now, yeah, absolutely, they should have consulted with us and further had that discussion. That's a whole nother conversation, but as far as control of that and laws and rules and how things can change, that, that's what happened. That's, that's what's going on there. But talking briefly and very briefly and informally with Council President McGee invited, said he'd have a conversation with you and, or for you to have a conversation of whoever the maker of that, whoever of the council, the council, I think it was Maldonado, the less that wanted to, certainly there's an opportunity there to further discuss that, if there is an opportunity, but just as far as, you know, who's able to do what, the council has that authority over their own rules and, and bylaws to make those, those changes, just, just so let you folks know that that's where that came from. But.
So. Alright, so like I said, I am going to follow up again with, because I know it was supposed to come back up on their agenda. I'm just not sure whether it's gone through. I know that there was a lot happening that week before the Fiesta Patronales. So I'm going to have to touch base again with the City Councillor Madonado to see where we're moving forward with this. So I'm not sure if they went back to the original Joint School Committee City Council or if they still have their, they did the final name change, which was something about youth services. Committee for Youth Services, something to that extent. Which is completely different than what, what we have. I do see Ms. Brunel's hand raised.
Yeah, I, I, you know, just to second your, your and Mayor Garcia's points, like, I think it, it comes down to simply a matter of newer councillors and, and, you know, needing to understand the roles of the subcommittees and, and what's going on. I think the intent is positive, right, their intent, what they'd like to see happen within the youth in, in committees, but, you know, like to Mildred's point, understanding that this specific committee has a specific role and specific structure and a specific job basically to do. And if they want to add duties, they would need to create their own potential Subcommittee to, to do what they want to do. So, you know, besides the fact that I don't think that the, the, the order had any malicious intent to kind of overstep us, I just, as the Chair of that committee, the fact that I simply got an email telling me that this happened is extremely disrespectful. I feel like the City Council does not fully value the School Committee as being, sure, we're not equal, like we don't run the city and, and make as many decisions for the city, but we're elected officials and we deserve mutual respect. And like, I couldn't imagine ever putting something like that on our agenda and not reaching out to the City Council's counterpart of being a Chair. And when I did reach out to the City Council's counterpart of being a Chair, he didn't even know what was going on. So just the simple fact that the City Council didn't even bother to reach out to our Chair, to reach out to me as the Chair of the Subcommittee and notify us of the agenda item, ask us for input. The fact that they didn't bother to like, you know, like to Mildred's point, like to read what the actual Subcommittee's role is, you know, it's just, I find it offensive that they don't, that nobody bothered to bring us into the fray until it was done and I was just sent this very informative, matter-of-fact email that, and I'm just like, no, like that's, no. So, you know, it's the process, it's the, it's the, you know, I don't think there was malicious intent by any stretch on, on what was trying to be accomplished. But you can't, you can't conduct business that involves a school, a, a committee that is a joint committee and not refer the order to the Joint Committee, not involve the Chairs of the Joint Committee. So, you know, I would just, I just think that needs to be said.
So, 1,000%, but just understand, I think there was definitely an unintended consequence by a new City Councillor with good intentions, who, who is inexperienced on that front. I don't want to place full blame on the full council, I think. I think that there was just a, a member who had, like you mentioned, great intentions, didn't fully recognize potential consequence by not, you know, by not going through the proper, talking with the, the Chairs, talking with the School Board, talking with, I think that's going to, when he catches one of this, I'm sure it's going to be a big learning experience on his end and, and I'm sure he'll make sure it doesn't happen again.
Disrespect is not in order, okay.
So just so that everybody's aware, because I don't think many know the history, but this goes back many years ago and I'm not sure if Mr. Calamore remembers. But it was back, I believe when Council McGivern might have been President, where there was issues that were happening and there was no communication between the district and the city. And that's where the School Committee made a motion and they created this joint and it was voted by the School Committee that there would be a creation of a Joint City Council School Committee, Committee. So that way there's back and forth communication, the City. The city's aware of what the, the, the district is doing, the district is, um, providing the information, it's a back and forth thing.
So that's what, that's what I mean. So you have, and I, and I, Wellahan, and I think we also have Rosalie with some points, but to throw in there, any committee that the council creates, they, they officially recognize it in their guidance or their bylaws and, and that's what happened. And then you had a new member come in who had no idea of that history, no idea of the, of the, of the, of the rules of engagement on that front and, and made that motion and going through that process. So you just gotta get them up to speed, um, into, uh, that, that the history you just shared and, and making sure that as he goes forward, that he's, uh, also need to recognize that it's not only in the council, but this is something we voted on, on, on as well, or this body, this, this committee has voted on as well, and that we need to also acknowledge and respect that this body needs to also contribute, uh, be a contributing member to any change on that joint, that joint, um, committee. Uh, you're all set, Ms. Collmore? This Wesley and then Mr. Collmore?
I would just like to say to Mr. Soto, um, there's a lot of work that's been put into all of this. Keep up the good work, I'm proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Collmore?
Yes, this city, new city council, was that referred to a committee or just brought up and nothing, they wanted to come to us, I mean, to the school committee about it?
It was in order and sent to, was it sent to committee, Ms. Brunel? No? If it was in order, I don't know where it went or what happened after that.
Right, I don't know, I don't believe it was sent to any committees, but it certainly was not sent to ours, which would only continue that, it would've made sense. Maybe it went to rules, um, or something, but I, I can't speak to that.
I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, just, just to find out.
Where it is.
Where it is, you know?
Okay.
We, we know it's not in, in ours. Is, is it in this city council's agenda in some committee?
So technically, Mr. Collmore, they've already voted on it.
Oh, they already voted on it.
It's already off their agenda because they've already voted on it. It's at Mildred's request that it's hopefully being brought back up.
Hmm, interesting.
Yeah, I mean.
They've already fully voted on it.
That's my point, I mean, you're talking about, you know, a new city council making a motion, okay. That being said, the entire city council voted for this without any input to our chairman, the chairperson of the subcommittee and our chair to ask our thoughts on the process. So that's, that's just a red flag to me that didn't really value what we're doing in this room. Thank you.
Well, I thank you guys all for, for everything. Again, I value and, and respect all the work that you guys are doing and at the end of the day, I always say, uh, a city does not grow without, um, our young leaders, right? So right now, we're here educating and we're here making decisions for the youth, for our future, the future of our city. And so for that, I think that is, that's powerful, it's strong and it is what it is. We're, we're better than that. Um, but we, um, at least let's make sure that whenever we're making decisions or anything, if, if it's gonna impact a different, uh, committee, that we make sure that we do, um, respect them and make sure that we reach out to them first, um, before making any decisions. So we're gonna move on to the next thing, which is announcements. So two quick announcements. The first one I am gonna say, um, before I get to the other one, is that the Holyoke Public Schools Nurses and Holyoke Health Center are offering a free COVID vaccine clinic on Wednesday, August 24th, from nine to two. It's gonna be at Donahue School, which is 210 Whiting Farms Road. It's for ages six months and up. Uh, participants will receive a $20 voucher for the Holyoke Farmers Market. So if anybody's interested, please make sure to call, uh, Holyoke Health Center at 413-420-2200 to schedule, um, their spot. Um, the other thing is, and I also want to make sure that everybody's aware, that if you're going in for a second style, you're going in for a boost or whatever the case is, always make sure to bring your COVID card with you so they can update it. Okay, now, training sessions for school committees. We are moving towards, um, getting out of receivership, right? That's our goal. So we're gonna be having extensive training and so we are getting our very own charting the course. It's the first segment to a multi-segment, uh, training, uh, to prepare us to get out of receivership. Um, charting the course, um, we're gonna be roles and responsibilities. Uh, we're talking about, uh, open meeting laws, state ethics, there's a slew of things, but this is just not the end all be all. There's more that will be involved, such as collective bargaining for student achievement and school committee and student achievement. Uh, MAS C will be providing this, um, these trainings to us. Um, it's, they've already started working with the Lawrence School District. So the first availability for us to start with this is the charting of course, it's a one day in person from 10 to four on September 10th. If you guys have any issues with that day, please send me an email, but, um, we've got to start this process. We can't keep delaying, uh, we have a lot of training to get through. Uh, we want to start changing the policies and updating it, then we really need to know what our roles and our responsibilities are and how we can do it. If we want to make sure that we are, um, that the district is running equitable and financially, then we need to be knowing about budget and finance, um, and that role. So there's a lot, a lot of training that's gonna be happening via Zoom as well, but the first training will be September 10th from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Mr. Soto, I'm gonna reach out to you to see if there's any way, excuse me, that we can possibly hold this training at, at the Dean Tech Cafeteria where it's more open space. Um, if now we can look for another location.
Can I ask a question? Were we asked about the date?
No. Did you, that's why I said if there's an issue with that, please send me an email. Um, but these, these long courses will be on a weekend, um, because it's gonna be in person. So we have to figure out, and I know October 22nd, we already have the rezoning. Um, so we have to be prepared, we, I mean, we've been in receivership long enough. It's time that we start, we start preparing ourselves. We can't, we can't take over a district without even knowing what we're doing. Are there any questions? So is there a motion to adjourn?
Was there any other announcements? I think Mr. Collmore had one.
Yes.
Oh, there were more announcements?
And Ms. Williams.
Well, it doesn't come under announcement, it comes under, uh, ongoing business. Uh, I just, could someone give me an update on what the commissioner's announcement about MCAT?
Okay, so the, the Board of Education has approved to increase, um, the requirements, uh, for student graduation. So the math, ELA, and science, um, the range has now increased. Um, I know through MAS C we had put in, and it'll be on, it was on last year's, uh, resolutions, um, concerns regarding, um, MCATs testing and the impact that it has on, on students, especially now during a pandemic. And that's something that we really need to, to look at and think about. Is that something that Holyoke wants to, uh, write up a letter in regards of our stance on what we, we feel to that decision? I mean, one of the biggest things that this pandemic has brought has been a lot of mental health, uh, concerns, increased number of admissions for youth and, and for psychiatric beds, but yet we don't even have psychiatric beds. Enough of that. Uh, suicide rates have increased, uh, more and more children are being diagnosed with new mental health, um, issues, and schools are seeing the impact, um, that this pandemic has had on, on our youth. And now here we are raising MCAT course, um, testing requirements, um, in order for them to graduate. So, I mean, that's something that we can put in for next month's agenda. Um, I can see if I can type up some type of letter, um, and see if this is something that you guys approve, um, and you want to sign on to it. Um, I'll find out if other dis- districts are doing some sort of resolution that we might want to sign up for and, and sign on to, but.
I would love to see that on the agenda, Mildred.
This Thursday, uh, Mr. Gates invited me to speak to his staff, uh, to try to encourage them and to bring one of my poems along, so I'm excited about it. Eight AM.
Great. Anybody else? Mr. Soto?
Real quick, I just wanted to congratulate Mildred. This was like the, uh, the Michael Jordan flu game.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You powered through a three-hour school committee meeting. Talk about dedication.
No excuses.
I haven't missed one meeting in all these years, ain't gonna miss it over COVID. So no further questions, no further announcements? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn, second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Wilson, seconded by Ms. Feliciano Sims. Any discretion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Lefave?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Romero?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rivera Cologne?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano?
Yes.
Mr. Willahan?
Yes.
Mr. Collmore?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes, I'll see you guys meeting finished, meeting adjourned at 9:05 PM. We'll see you all September 19th.
Okay, hope you're feeling better.